All right, welcome everybody to City Council's special meeting Tuesday, January 10. First, I will have our city clerk do our roll call.
Mayor Kayleigh Clark.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Amy Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Howe.
Here.
Councilmember Kentine.
Present.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Otuja Ndepuré.
Here.
Councilmember Oshin O'Farrell.
Here.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. And next, I will have Councilmember Ndepuré lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. So first up, it looks like we have, I forgot about the staff recommendation for approval of the agenda. I will open it up if anyone wants to make that amendment. Oh, if you have it. I move, what? Yeah, so I move to approve, or to, sorry, I move that we make the Parks and Recreation Commission interviews second in the board and commission interview order for the following of the, all the applicants that makes the questions, I think, make most sense.
Any second.
All right, so I only did the motion to switch things. All those in favor to switch the order of the interviews, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, seven zero, that is good to go. Next, I will undertake a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are approved. So first up, we have our proclamations, and I'll have Deputy Mayor Lamb read Martin Luther King Jr. Day.
The proclamation is for the National Day of Service, Monday, January 16, 2023. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. devoted his life to advancing equality, social justice, and opportunity for all, and challenged all Americans to participate in the never-ending work of building a more perfect union, and whereas Dr. King's teaching can continue to guide and inspire us in addressing challenges in our communities, and whereas the King Holiday and Service Act enacted in 1994 designated the King Holiday as a national day of volunteer service, and whereas the Universal Declaration of Human Rights empowers us all, the principles enshrined in the Declaration are as relevant today as they were in 1948, and whereas since 1994, 1,994 millions of Americans have been inspired by the life and work of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. to serve their neighbors and communities on the King Holiday, and whereas serving on the King Holiday is an appropriate way to honor Dr. King, meet local and national needs, bring our citizens together, and strengthen our communities and nation, and whereas the King Day of Service is the only federal holiday commemorated as the National Day of Service and offers an opportunity for Americans to give back to their communities on the holiday and make an ongoing commitment to service throughout the year, and whereas each of us can and must contribute to making our communities better with increased opportunity for all our citizens, and now therefore, the mayor, Kayleigh Clark, on behalf of the Samamish City Council, do hereby proclaim January 16, 2023, as National Day of Service, as a day of service in Samamish, and call upon the people of the community to pay tribute to the life and works of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. through participation in community service projects on Martin Luther King Day and throughout the year. I also wanted to mention that our city website has a community involvement page, and on it, they list the organizations that we can volunteer at, and activities and places within the city that you can volunteer at.
Great, thank you so much. Next, we have public comment. I'm not sure if we have any in the room. Thank you. All right, so we have one in the room, Phil.
Good evening. My name is Phil Ritter. I've lived in Samamish with my wife Lynn for six years. I'm a CPA and work part-time doing financial consulting and project management work for nonprofit housing developers. Lynn and I work with 350 Eastside, People for Climate Action, the Sierra Club, the Washington Clean Energy Coalition, and the East King County PUD Campaign. Thank you to the council and staff for moving ahead on a climate action plan for the city of Samamish and to the consultants for their work. There appears to be general agreement that our burning oil and gas for powering our cars and heating our buildings needs to be reduced by half in seven years and eliminated entirely in 25 years if we are to have a reasonable chance of keeping the climate habitable for ourselves and our offspring. To achieve these goals, we need a plan which can show us what we need to change and inform us about the amount of emission reductions these changes are producing, also about the likely challenges we will face on this reduction path and how other cities have dealt with them. For example, we know that we can reduce using oil and gas for cars by using electric-powered vehicles, but that requires every garage and a lot of parking spaces to have chargers and an electric grid capable of providing the additional electricity reliably and affordably. It also requires that the electricity be generated by sources that don't burn oil and gas and will need to come from some distance away. An intelligent approach to these challenges requires a plan which is well thought out, supported by facts, and supported by the community. But we don't need a finished plan to get started. If your house is on fire, you don't start by working on the plan to restore the burned house. You start by putting out the fire. Between now and the end of the year, this city council has an opportunity to adopt some policies which have been shown to reduce oil and gas burning significantly without major disruption, and with the federal funding available from the Inflation Reduction Act of 2022, can implement these policies with minimal budget impact. If this council adopts a clear policy statement that we will have zero oil and gas burning by 2050, then all future actions that have a climate impact will have to be factored in. A requirement that all new buildings provide an EV charger for each parking space is something that would be easy to implement. A requirement that all new buildings provide sufficient electric capacity for EV charging, heating, and water heating.
Thank you so much, Phil.
Am I over? Yep.
Yeah, sorry. I'm used to a beep. I'm sorry.
I encourage the city council to keep this issue as one of the priorities for action in coming months. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. All right, that's all we had signed up in the room, and next we'll move to online.
If you wish to provide comment, please raise your hand online. If calling by phone, please press star nine. I will now promote the first commenter. There is a three-minute timeout. Ms. Victor.
Good evening. This is Mary Victor, Samamish for 22 years. The presentation on climates tonight for city council was done at the Planning Commission last week, and for that, I had actually emailed in some things about, I grew up in Bozeman, Montana. I still own property there. My family's been there since 1964. And since there's been COVID, I've been able to do meetings remotely, and I will say that I've been utterly impressed by some of the things that the advisory boards have been doing for the city of Bozeman, which is roughly the size of Samamish, and I wanted to share that. So they have a sustainability board. They started off with about 40 boards, and last year, from August through November, they kind of regrouped those boards and solidified them into five larger boards, with one of them being sustainability, the other one's transportation, and that's in the email. But just watching the event videos for the sustainability board, they have a work plan for the next two years, which is extremely aggressive, very good. They say that they have to do it. It's led by a staff liaison, and there's eight to 10 people on it from all different types of professions and walks of life. And they talk about a lot of things. They even have a C-PACE thing where it's commercial improvements that after they're built, there can be funding for back. I know that's a Montana state legislature, so I don't know if that would work here. But it's just really astounding, some of the things that they're doing. They do have a climate action plan online at the bozeman.net website, and that has a dashboard. It has things individuals can do. It has things that businesses can do, and obviously, there's some overlap because some things you can do at home, you could similarly do at business, and uses color coding that's very reasonable, so you can see kind of like a stoplight, green, yellow, red. Red means you're not working on it. Yellow means it's in progress, and green means it's working. It's just a really good set of information. And I did also look at, like, Issaquah's Climate Plan, Redmond's, Woodinville's, Kirkland's, Bellevue's. I didn't read them all, but I kind of glanced through them to see the types of things that we could glean. So I didn't have time to write up an email tonight before the meeting, but I will hopefully try to follow up with that so that you can have access to those resources for yourself. And as council members, I know how much time you dedicate to do things. So if it's something that you can't do, if you know someone or a group of people, or like, I know there's been a lot of students that have been interested in climate change. I think if people read those materials, looked through them, gleaned ideas from them, even more than gleaned, used some of the ideas from them, and take them and translate them to our city, I think that would be fantastic. And I will say that the sustainability board meetings that I have watched in Bozeman, Montana, and Yellington County, it's in the southwestern part of Montana, about 90 miles north of Yellowstone. They've really been informative, useful, the discussions, the presentations, and the materials, and some of the topics on climate change. So that's all I have for tonight. Have a good meeting, and I hope you do a great job appointing to commissions. Thanks.
Thank you.
I will now promote the next commenter.
James Eastman, Samamish, Washington. Many of you probably know, I've been attending these meetings regularly for the past six years, and my brother and I own over 100 acres in Samamish. We've owned land in the city for the past 16 years, and six years ago, I came here with the intention of building homes on our property. During that time, and after experiencing many moratoriums, it became evident that the community had other wants and needs other than us building housing on our property. Some of those wants and needs that became evident to us were additional traffic infrastructure being built, connected trails, preservation of forests, and reduction of our carbon footprint, views of the lake for all people, increased revenue sources for the city, and community gathering places. With these things in mind, I've thought of many different ways that my property can be better used to the community. One day, when I was looking on iMap and just happened to notice that my property was almost exactly perpendicular to the Light Rail Station on Northeast Fortieth Street, I thought to myself, what if there were an Ariel Gondola being Fred right off Eastlake-Samamish Parkway, crossing the lake, and running directly over Northeast Fortieth Street and connecting right into Light Rail? Surely, it must be cheaper than widening Sahaly Way, and the time to get there would be much quicker than going in your vehicle. I hired experts to do a feasibility study. Not only is this possible, but this also enlightened, not only is this possible, but this also enlightened me on all the other wonderful benefits that a gondola could offer. From here, my plans continue to evolve, even to the point where development possibilities have presented the opportunity of not only taking people right to Light Rail Samamish, but also then bringing them to our property. I wanted to come up with a use on our property that would be respectful of the community needs and the other items I already discussed above. What I came up with is a multi-use campus designed with suspension bridges, six miles of trails, viewpoints, an amphitheater for the community, botanical gardens, an arboretum, a hotel, and tech buildings. I have a website, eastlakedevelopment.com. Just barely got it up and running. It's a work in progress, but there's architectural renderings there of my vision, and I'm hopeful that the seven of you can use your expertise to add to this vision, and that over the next six months, we can work it into the scope of the comp plan update and get legislative process that it deserves, and it can continue to evolve for the next two years as we do this update. I'm also hopeful that staff will be open to allowing the public to weigh in and to use their expertise to push this along and allow the wants and the needs of the community to be heard and the legislative process to play out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other commenters online? I do not see any more commenters. Thank you very much, Mayor.
All right, thank you so much. So our first, I guess, main topic would be our interviews with our boards and commissions. So we are going to start with the Arts Commission. And Krista, I don't know if you're taking or giving any notes on, or Scott, sorry to put you on the spot.
One clarification is, we did have an applicant tonight for the Arts Commission who was not in the packet, Ms. Shutterly, but she has been able to interview tonight, and staff has recommended that she be interviewed with the other applicants. And then the other question is just how you will handle the secondary applicants, but that isn't really, until you get to the Parks and Rec, you have two secondary applicants who are also interviewing for the Planning Commission. And we have not specified a length for the interviews, but I'm thinking approximately no more than five minutes each, but there is no set time currently. Thank you.
I would love three minutes max, if possible. I don't know if everyone else is good with that. And we did move the Parks and Rec second, so it will Arts, Parks and Rec, Human Services, then Planning. That's correct, yeah. And then I hope I can track all of the emails back and forth with withdrawals and back on. But I think right now, it was Joseph Arons is the one that's out for Human Services.
Yes, so from the packet, we had one withdrawal, Mr. Arons for Human Services Commission withdrew tonight.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. Okay, so council, I know we have basically the same question for Arts, Parks and Rec, and Human Services, so I can ask that, or anyone else can ask it if they would like. And then we have a different question for Planning Commission, and we do have the order that was posted with the agenda as well. So first would be, I wish I could pronounce this, I should have asked, Anamika. Not sure if she's in the room or online.
Okay, I will promote the speaker.
And council, while she's being promoted, are you good with me asking that question?
Yes.
Cool. And it will be the same for those first three commissions, but if anyone, especially who's transitioning online and in the room, more than willing to repeat it. Hello, can you hear us?
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes, some glitch with the system. Yeah, there I am.
Perfect.
It's Anamika.
Anamika, thank you so much. All right, so we will ask you one question, and you should be able to see, we have a three-minute timer, max, and after that, we'll pretty much just move to the next person and do voting after. I think we're doing a rank choice voting. So there won't be any conversation back and forth, but if you need any clarification, please let us know. All right, is there anything else from council before we start?
We haven't decided how we're going to vote.
Apparently, we have not decided how we're going to vote. I thought we discussed rank choice voting last week. My apologies.
Excuse me, have the clerk staff walk us through the voting process?
So we do have the ballots up at the dais there, and the voting would occur at the very end, after all the interviews have been done, and we would tally it on the screen so everyone can see the results.
That being said, we have not decided how it will be counted, I guess.
It's just straight up, it's just straight up.
Sorry, council, I think the goal is here that you vote for the number of open seats within that commission. So whatever votes you put in, it should mirror the number of open seats on that commission.
Okay.
And that way, when we get to the end, the clerk's office will tally up, and the top vote-getters, based on the number of open seats, will be the nominated board or commission member.
Thank you for the help. All right. Okay, now we will get started. Thank you so much. So first is, what topics interest you the most for the Arts Commission to work on during your tenure if you are appointed?
It's been three years I'm here in Samamish. So when I came here, what I, most of the difficulty, what I faced as an artist is the lack of information and very less exposure. So my agenda will be to create a safe space for all the artists to share information, share spaces, to go for collaborative work, and be there for each other. And I think Samamish Art Fair has happened last was in 2017, if I'm not wrong. I would want Samamish to be there on the map of art world around, along with the surrounding areas.
Great, thank you. Yeah, you still have two minutes if you'd like to add anything?
No, I'm good.
Great, yeah. Thank you so much for your time. So next up will be Ashley. I think she's in the room. Would you like the question again?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Hi, everybody. Hi, I'm Ashley. If I'm on the camera, let me try to fix my hair. The topic that excites me the most about the Arts Commission is being able to work on the strategic plan. I have been a big advocate for it since I was appointed four years ago. If I'm 100% honest, when I was appointed to the Arts Commission, it was kind of overwhelming, because everybody kind of has, like, individual plans and projects that they work on. And so then, like, I'm thrown into the room with all these people, and I'm like, I don't know where to start, or like, what to do, and it was just intimidating. But luckily, a previous commissioner and a former staff member, Chris Jordan, suggested a strategic plan, and I'm like, yes, I'm on board wholeheartedly. So I have been on the subcommittee for that since then. And it would be an honor to work with the team to get a plan for the future. It will also provide new commissioners an idea of what they can do, how to do it, and where to start, so nobody's intimidated again. I would also like to continue the work I've been doing. I've enjoyed working with the fellow arts commissioners on, like, creating community art events, and if I am reappointed, I would make sure that community involvement stays a priority. That is all I have to say about that. I also am being interviewed for the Planning Commission, but due to childcare, I am going to have to do it virtually. Is that okay?
Yes, absolutely.
I'll see you guys later. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ashley. All right, next we have Claridell.
Yes, excuse me, Claridell Shad. The question of the Arts Commission is, during your tenure, if appointed or reappointed, what would be your goal? I did want to ask, I supplied copies for each of you, a copy of the application, which was very lengthy. Did they all get their copies? So I don't want to be repetitious here. About six years ago, the council asked me to consider undertaking the substantial job of decorating utility boxes. So I have actually done designs for 34 of the boxes. Five you have not seen yet because they're designed but not installed or reinstalled. And in doing that, I had to get to the people. As you know, the boxes reflect what happened historically at that very corner of Samamish. The first one I did was Lewis Thompson Road. So I worked with five different Native American tribes to get to the records of what did they do when they were there. And at that intersection, the medicine lady used to pull her canoe up right at Lewis Thompson Road. So every one of the boxes reflects the families who settled at that specific location. In finding the living members, grandchildren, great-grandchildren, where I could get pictures, and I've worked with museums, the Seattle Historic Museum, Issaquah, Redmond, in order to obtain the data to incorporate on the boxes, I set up a Samamish tree in ancestry.com, and I have over 10,000 profile pages of individuals. So I have talked with hundreds, I've talked with that many different people, or by email, et cetera, in order to get the material, the accurate material, and the records to share with you. My goal was to bring joy to the people in Samamish as to who was there. I also wanted to make sure that we honored everybody in Samamish. One corner, the Finnish people settled there. One corner, the Germans settled there, the Norwegians, and as I've already mentioned, the tribes at that particular corner. So it's been very all-encompassing as far as including everybody, and the stories are so fun. I have field trips planned with schools, and do I have any time left at all?
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, next we have Preeti.
Okay, I believe this applicant is online.
Okay. And while we're waiting, I have another voting question, if you're not surprised. So we're waiting till the very end of, after all the interviews, to turn them in, not after each commission. Is that correct?
That is up to your discretion, but we were thinking of doing all the interviews first.
I don't want to mess up.
For time. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Now you can hear?
Yes, now we can hear you.
Yeah, so let me check. Okay, yeah, I'm here.
Okay, great. I'm not sure if you heard the question. I can repeat it. It's what topics interest you the most for the Plan, or not Planning Commission, wow, for the Arts Commission to work on during your tenure if you are appointed, and you do have three minutes.
Okay, so I was in Art Commission. I was in Art Commission since 2014 to 2018, and I organized a Bollywood dance event, which is cultural, but still it's considered as an art. So, yeah. So, yeah, and I would like to go with in the future if I'm appointed. So I am going to different school and motivate the kids to do more art and stuff. So, yeah. And, yeah, I think that's it because I am not prepared. I'm flying tomorrow.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you so much for joining us, Preeti.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, have a great evening.
Yeah, thank you. So can I leave the meeting or?
I'm sorry, what was that? Oh. Oh, no. I'm not sure if she was asking about the process, probably, but we will know within an hour. If you are still on, I think you're flying, you said, tomorrow, so we will have the answer this evening. So next up, we have Rachel.
Hi, my name is Rachel Yeo, and I'm a resident here in Samamish. And thank you for your time. Thank you for opening up this opportunity for me to speak to you guys. So just a little background on me. I am a living artist, and there are living artists in this community, and I feel that they need to be reached, they need to be heard, and they need to be represented. In King County, I believe that we have the opportunity to promote and cultivate art and art culture even within Samamish. And I think as far as like what I, my topic of interest would be, would be to really focus on the mission statement that the Art Committee has already put forth and the guiding principles of artistic excellence, showcasing local, regional, and national artistic programming, and accessibility to engage deeply and widely with all segments, create an avenue for artists to bring their creativity to the public. I'm sorry, I'm very nervous speaking in front of people, so we're gonna be here. But I believe that we have the opportunity here in this city to be able to promote King County artists in a way that could create avenue, revenue streams for local artists. We have a very successful, very rich environment here, people with lots of money. And there needs to be a way for art to be incorporated in local events. And I believe that it's possible for the city to incorporate art into events that are already taking place, that have other types of themes to it. I am recognized by King County for culture as a cultural worker, and I received a COVID relief grant. And it's been really a difficult road for me. It's almost that I have to take a vow of poverty to be an artist, and some people really need community support. I applied to the Art Commission for grants twice and was called one time and asked if I would take less than what I was asking for and give the same amount of work. And I felt that that was inappropriate. And I feel that artists need representation and city support, and there's a way for us to get corporate sponsorships and create avenues for revenue streams to bring the public and the private art together. And I feel if I'm allowed to be a part of this commission, I'm going to lead with a burning desire and passion to make sure that this city is open and responsive to art and art culture, and that we're competitive with like Kirkland and Seattle and everybody else as far as appreciating art and art culture and artists.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have Vera.
I believe this is an online participant.
Hello. Hi, sorry. Can you guys hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi. Yeah, my name is Vara. I'm a resident of Samamish since two years. So in whatever strategy I'm involved, I can bring expertise and unique perspective to the table, and I can enhance the cultural life of the community by providing performing arts activities and events, which will allow community to enjoy all the arts-related activities by all the residents of Samamish. So the goal is to organize quality arts programming events with using the technology, since I have a technology background. I think I can empower more youth and encourage seniors. I'm also very optimistic that we can do a lot with the use of current technology in organizing these kind of arts events. Yeah, I can also bring fresh and active eyes because I have no experience in dealing with the city board or commission. Yeah, looking forward to it.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
And lastly, for the Arts Commission, we have Jen.
Hi, I'm Jen Shetterly. A little bit about me, I've worked as a creative director and user experience designer for over 25 years, designing global products for a variety of end users. And I have degrees in art and graphic design. Based on my experience and knowledge, there's three topics that would interest me if I was appointed to the Arts Commission. The first topic is helping the arts play a more active role in the future growth, planning, and identity of the city than they do today. The second topic is helping to improve art selections that not only reflects the diversity of the community, but the breadth of the arts disciplines, diversity of artists, and the qualities that make for great art in a variety of mediums. And the last topic is creating more awareness, interaction, and appreciation for our public art. There's some great art that's been installed, but you have to drive by it on a roundabout or visit City Hall. Let's make the arts a more visible and integrated part of living in Samamish. I've been here for over 20 years, raised my family here, and I'm looking forward to hopefully helping the community with arts. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. Next, we are moving to Parks and Recreation Commission, starting with Ms. Dina Anne. So for this commission and the Arts Commission, both, we have three vacancies, and the question for this is the same. I'll read it one more time. What topics interest you the most for the Parks and Recreation Commission to work, that you want to work on during your tenure if you are appointed, or reappointed, I should say?
Thank you. Hello to the council and city staff and everybody else who's here, excited to put their name in the ring for being on the commission. For me, it would be my pleasure to actually stay on course. There's much to be done, and great projects are being created that our commission helps to curate. Currently, the commission feels like an integral part to the Parks Department's support staff. We have the ability to supplement the Parks Department efforts, and there's no shortage of opportunity to lend that support. I'd like to continue with my current efforts. So far, there are bio bags in the parks, and we're working on a community parks campaign for our resident dog parents. I'm super excited about our combined efforts and for the willingness of the Parks team. This is the, one of the main reasons the Parks Commission is worth time given to volunteering. So I'm very excited at what I've been able to do so far, and I'd like to keep doing it. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you so much. Next is Chris.
Hello, council members. It's a pleasure to be here today. First, I'd like to set a little context of how I would add value to the Parks Commission, and from there, in our recommendations and advice to the city council, and ultimately for the benefit of our residents. First of all, I've spent a lifetime doing things outdoors, including plenty of time in national, state, county, and our city parks. I've been a Samamish resident for 11 years, and during that time, raised my son. We spent a lot of time as a parent and a child playing in the parks, so I bring that perspective as well. Three years ago, I was mountain biking with my son in Dothe Hill Mountain Bike Park, and I had an accident that resulted in a spinal cord injury and put me in the wheelchair that I'm in today. From that, I also have now the perspective of being a disabled person using parks and the joys and often challenges that that brings, which I'll tell you more about in a few minutes. Also, I can bring my experience from many years of consulting with Deloitte Consulting, doing strategic planning, multi-year planning of complex projects, and facilitation of groups and working with diverse constituencies to make things happen. Lastly, I'm retired, and I have the time and interest to be of service to my community. So to answer the question, I have two primary interests, knowing that the Parks and Rec Commission has the responsibility to cover a broad range of things across operating, maintenance, capital improvement projects, and so forth. So the first is that parks is a heartbeat of our community. It's an equalizing space for people to come and play and recreate for free regardless of income or race or gender. But not, but it's not always that parks are fully amenable to people with disabilities, I've found. So I'd like to have input for the planning and management of our parks from a disability's perspective. And that doesn't just mean paved paths. Let me give you a couple of examples. Big Rock Park, we were there for a walk. We wanted to go around the loop trail. We found that there was a step down that prevented me from going around the loop trail. That would be an easy fix, but not one that somebody would think of if they weren't in a wheelchair. Second example, we were up at Cougar Mountain Park. It's a...
I'm so sorry, the three minutes. You can at least finish that sentence. Sorry.
All right, thanks. Well, I'll just say the, the second topic would be, I know the Planning Commission is working on the comprehensive plan. The PRO plan needs to be updated as part of that, starting this year and continuing on to 2024, and I think I could very much contribute to that as an important process. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you so much. All right. Next up, we have Jason.
This is an online interviewer, so I will promote him.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, hello, Jason. I'm not sure if you heard the question. Would you like me to repeat it?
I did hear the question.
Great.
I heard the question, thanks.
Awesome. Yeah, go ahead when you're ready.
Right. So my name is Jason Schurk, and I've lived in Samamish for about 15 years, been very active in outdoor activities, including hiking and mountain biking, trail running, volunteering. For the past two years, I've been a volunteer with Washington Trail Association, pastor as assistant crew lead with WTA. Dan.
Not sure if he lost service or not. There he is.
Sorry about that. I think I just dropped for a second.
Yeah, all right. Please continue.
So I'm calling from Redmond Middle School. My daughter is in the developmental, or she's development disabled, and is playing basketball with the program that Redmond has going on here. She's been doing adaptive sports with the city of Redmond for the past 15 years or so. She's 25 now, so an adult, but I'm here just not to drive. And I think adaptive recreation is, I think, one of the big opportunities for Samamish, kind of missing that opportunity since we've been coming to Redmond for so long. It's one of the big areas, other than I'm very active with just different outdoor recreation activities in the parks, like I mentioned, running and whatnot. But city Samamish has so many fantastic city and county parks. It's a great place to live and recreate, and I just want to be part of, you know, seeing incremental improvements that are part of the, that are on the plans, to see those through, and help ensure that we keep in mind our aging and disabled population. So that's all I had to say.
Great. Thank you so much, Jason. All right. Next up, we have Mary.
Hello. I've been a Samamish resident for about 15 years, and I use our parks. I'm thrilled with the variety that we have. What interests me is probably the planning. I love seeing the city looking forward to the future, acquiring land, developing it in different ways for the different needs of residences, residents, and that interests me. I was a young mother at one time. I used parks differently than I do now, but I'm aware of the different needs that we all have and how we want to use them. If I was specific in what interests me right now, it might be, I just see a little, a need in the increasing garden plots, community garden plots. Gardening is a passion of mine, has been for years, and it gets me outside exercising, and it's so good for mental health, and I think that's a need that we all have sometimes. And so I feel like I have something to offer. I would love to work with other people who share my interests, and I think it's a wonderful opportunity, and I'm honored to be considered. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. Sadia. What was that? I am so sorry. I literally already checked it off. Melanie, please.
I thought alphabetically.
Yeah, no, thank you, everybody.
I wasn't going to say anything unless you got to the end and forgot about me.
Okay, hello. I have three topics that I am excited about if I do get reappointed to the Parks and Recreation Commission. First of all is the completion of the master plans for Big Rock, Big Rock South and Beaton Hill. The Parks Commission and staff did excellent work in 2022, and I would like to see it through to the end. Secondly, as has been suggested, as has been mentioned already, the 2024 Pro Plan. I am excited to work collaboratively with other commissioners, residents, staff, and strategic, to shape the strategic future of our parks, especially what's near and dear to me is the acquisition of more open space. And then thirdly, the future planning for the Yates and Parker properties. These are exceptional properties, and in my opinion, they offer unique opportunities for us for low-maintenance passive recreation opportunities. opportunity, and I'm honored to be considered. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. What was that? I am so sorry, I literally already checked it off. Melanie, please.
I thought alphabetically.
Yeah, no, thank you, everybody.
I wasn't going to say anything unless you got to the end and forgot about me.
Okay, hello. I have three topics that I am excited about if I do get reappointed to the Parks and Recreation Commission. First of all is the completion of the master plans for Big Rock, Big Rock South and Beaton Hill. The Parks Commission and staff did excellent work in 2022, and I would like to see it through to the end. Secondly, as has been suggested, as has been mentioned already, the 2024 PRO Plan. I am excited to work collaboratively with other commissioners, residents, staff, and strategic, to shape the strategic future of our parks, especially what's near and dear to me is the acquisition of more open space. And then, thirdly, the future planning for the Yates and Parker properties. These are exceptional properties, and in my opinion, they offer unique opportunities for us for low-maintenance passive recreation opportunities. That's me.
Great, thank you. Now we'll move, next.
I do not see this next applicant. If you are on the online list, could you please raise your hand?
And it's Sadia Sayed.
I did not get a confirmation from this applicant either, so...
Okay.
I would suggest moving on to the next applicant. Thank you.
All right, Roberto.
Yeah, good evening. First of all, thanks for the opportunity to be here and try to get more engaged in the community. So regarding the Parks and Recreation, my wife and I moved to Sammish a little bit more than nine years ago, and one of the things that we discovered, which we always enjoyed on vacations in Colorado, was to go hiking. And what a great place, you know, to go hiking here in Sammish and the surrounding communities. And so, we like to go hiking in the Hazel Wolf wetlands quite often, and one of the things that we have noticed is that the maintenance of the trails sometimes leaves some to be desired, you know. So some of the things that I think the Parks and Recreation Committee could concentrate on would be on the maintenance of the trails, as well as expansion of looking at more trails. The other thing that we've noticed is that when we started hiking in that area, there's a large pond that had a lot of ducks and birds and, you know, some other animals in the area. In the recent past, the pond has been covered by quite a bit of vegetation, and I'm not really sure the reason why that happens, but typically is contamination with phosphates, pollution with phosphates. So I think one of the things that perhaps the committee can concentrate on is also looking at how to ameliorate some of these pollution issues that you encounter, especially in ponds and lakes. And last, I think, we have such a great community with such great parks and recreation, and one of the things that one could probably also concentrate on would be promoting what we have. And I'm just thinking especially for people who are retirees to do that, but more importantly, for young people. And you have this problem with young people playing computer games at home or doing a lot of social media all the time, and wouldn't it be great if we could promote some of the wonderful capabilities that we have in the community and get more young people to be outdoors and enjoy the beauty of what we have? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next is Wasim.
I was only for the planning commission. I have my interest in...
Oh, in this one, okay. Okay, all right. So next, we will move on to the Human Services Commission, and first, we have Vera, and I believe this is her secondary choice after the Arts Commission. Yeah, I don't know if she's still online, I guess.
Yeah, she is still online. Oh, there she is.
Great.
Thank you.
And so the same question is for Human Services Commission. So what topics interest you the most for the Human Services Commission to work on during your tenure, if appointed?
Hi, can you hear me well?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I'm passionate about making difference. I'm leading a nonprofit organization here, and I have helped various local charity organizations by raising funds for its projects. So my goal is to plan, facilitate, and fund to the community needs. I'm curious how the city board works, and I would like to learn, engage, and impact by doing more than what I'm doing right now. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. All right, and then we have Mary, and I think this is your secondary choice to Parks and Rec.
This is my secondary choice. I have, I have a lot of interest in it, though. I think probably because my, my work life, I have been involved in human services for quite a bit. I worked 11 years for Habitat for Humanity, and then I worked five years for a domestic violence agency, Lifewire, used to be Eastside Domestic Violence, and now I'm back at Habitat for Humanity, just again this month. So I see the needs of people. Housing is always a critical need. It was for domestic violence survivors as well. I found that Lifewire, one of the very effective ways of supporting survivors, was with very small cash grants. $500 could keep them, say, from losing their job because the car broke down, or they didn't even have the gasoline. I know that the city does support people through small cash grants, because there's no point in reinventing existing human service organizations, and that's a very effective way to do it. So I have, I have some experience there. I love the work. I have a passion for meeting people and helping them to decide how they can be helped. I think that's important, to let them to decide. I'm so pleased that the city is interested in supporting people that way. So that is, I would say that I have skills in, in working in human services. Perhaps my heart is in Parks and Rec, but, you know, maybe you guys decide, because I like them both. Thanks.
Thank you for giving us the option. Yes. Okay. Did Sadia ever come on? They're the last person for the Human Services.
I do not see that applicant. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Krista. Okay, so Planning Commission. So first up is Josh, and we have two spots for the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission does have a different question. Okay. So "Value conflicts are about the way things ought to be, not the way they are now. It highlights our core values and principles. How would you handle value conflicts with the topics that are covered in the Planning Commission?"
All right, well, thank you first for allowing us to see that question in advance. It required a little bit more thought, because it's more than just our policy opinions. So, you know, it asks us to look deep in ourselves, and that's a bit harder to do. And to be honest, I struggled with this question. Matters of policy the Planning Commission deals in aren't really at odds with what I consider to be my core values, even if the ultimate recommendations might be opposite of what my personal preferences might be. In what I do, I try to use the rotary four-way test, which is, is it the truth? Is it fair to all concerned? Will it build goodwill and better friendships? And will it be beneficial to all concerned? And I think that's a pretty good filter to use. In the legislative process, you win some and you lose some. An individual against your position today might be for another position of yours tomorrow. And I believe if we all walk away from a contentious issue feeling like we all won and lost something, it was probably a pretty good, excuse me, pretty good compromise. I try to remember that an individual I'm serving with might feel a vote goes against their core values and be disappointed with the results. I use the filter, is what I'm saying before, during, or after a vote building goodwill. I think it's critical we remember that our fellow council, fellow commissioners are volunteering to do this to improve our community. We need to be empathetic to their position, be good listeners, find compromise, and not gloat. Thank you for the opportunity to interview for the reappointment. I've really enjoyed my time serving on the Planning Commission, and I ask for your vote to continue to serve our community for another term. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to start by quoting Dalai Lama, and one of his quotes is, "When you talk, you're saying something you already know, but when you listen, you may learn something new." And it just happened to be that, right before we got this question, I watched an interview that former Supreme Court Justice Stephen Breyer had, and he was talking about the way how things are handled in the Supreme Court. And I think any time you are serving in any type of capacity with a group of people, the example that Justice Breyer gave would be perfect as to how you can have a good way to interact with everybody and come up with decisions. And what he was talking about is that when, when, in the Supreme Court, when he was serving in the Supreme Court, of course, there were people who had completely different opinions to what his opinion was. And one of the things he wanted to do was to listen, listen to what the other people had, because, you know, they had their own, their own truths, their own values, and they wanted to express that. And sometimes there were some heated discussions, because the truths and the values of some of the other justices were completely opposite to the truths and values that he carried. But one of the things he wanted to do was to listen, and he would let the other person talk, listen to the positions that they were expressing, and then try to understand where they were coming from, and it would get to a point where either he completely believed in his values, strengthening the values that he had, or it changed his perspective. And I think that's the important part of listening to what other people have to say. And what was interesting that he said is that they would have some heated discussions when they were talking about certain things that they had to decide on, but as soon as the decision was made, they would go and have lunch together, and it was like, there was never any discussion about, about the kind of disagreements that they had. And the other thing that was important, he said, once the decision was made and a vote was made, then, then, then you have to just accept the fact that either you won or you lost. And by that acceptance, then it just makes the group to work together much better. And in this case, oh, and then the other thing is that then he writes an opinion, like if he lost, he writes an opinion, and he presents why he disagrees with the decision that was made. In this situation, with the Planning Commission, if my position was going to be the losing position, I would probably want to also write some kind of an opinion, present it, present it to you in the Supreme Court, that's the final decision. In the Planning Commission, the final decision rests with you, so hopefully we could convince you to take my position, even if it's a losing position. Thank you.
That's hilarious. Okay.
Honorable members of the council, Madam Mayor, delighted to be in here and be interviewed for the position, possible position on the Planning Commission. When I looked at the question, the first thing came to my mind is that when we're talking about the conflict in the values, we have to understand that each individual, each human being, you have set of values, and you have set of core values and interests. The first thing that comes to mind is that, are these core values are the same as interests? They're not necessarily the same. Core values are the things that you learn over the years, depending on your professions and your experience and what, what you've been doing in life. So, so what I thought that would be the best thing to address the core values, when you're dealing with the conflict, you have to, you have to follow set of rules and regulations. You have to be able to accommodate the individual's desire and listen to them and make sure that you understand their position. You have to collaborate, you have to compromise, and you have, sometimes you have to compete. I looked at, and I admire, the city's core values, therefore, D E I S, diversity, inclusion, equity, and also sense of belonging. These are the core values of the city. So any time that, if I'm serving the city, I have to keep in mind that the council has adopted those core values, and keep that in mind in my decision-making, in my position and all that, and make sure that whatever I say or what I suggest would be not contradictory, those core values of the city. And then when I'm dealing with the conflict, that I have possible conflict with the other members of the, of the Planning Commission or any group, I have to understand their position. Sometimes I have to compromise, I have to make some concessions, I have to sit down with them and have a good understanding of their position, and then throughout the dialogue that I'm going to have with those individuals, come up with a solution and follow up and make sure that we're going to be on the same page. I know that I don't have that much time left, but one thing that I want to mention to you is that, one of the things, uniqueness about my application, is that, as you probably have seen in my resume, I have been serving the city, I was serving the city of Issaquah for 14 years as a Planning Commission. I have the background both in engineering, and I bring the one perspective that has been, has not been heard in the Planning Commission, I have the degree in the traffic engineering and urban planning. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Wasim Fayad. I'm a resident of Sammish. I've been here for 21-plus years, and I'm also a business owner for more than five years. One of the things that I love about the city of Sammish is its diversity. We all come from diverse backgrounds, diverse religious beliefs, diverse cultural beliefs, professional, different professions. So everybody has a different core values, diverse core values, and we need to celebrate those core values. As we think about the, when there's a conflict of values as part of the Planning Commission, one of the things that we need to think about is always assume good intention, that everybody wants the best for the city. Everybody is putting what they believe is the best. So therefore, we need to basically ask and try to understand what the, what the other person is trying to, what is the end goal? What are they trying to achieve? And try to understand where they're coming from, rather than take the issue as a personal issue. So all issues need to be addressed in that, in that context. We need to always think about what are the core values that, no matter where you come from, what your diverse backgrounds are, we all have to uphold the value of respect, be respectful to each other, make sure that we're honest, as we are, whatever we're doing, we're honest about it, and also be fair. You know, think about issue with fairness, as well as being compassionate, compassionate, and try to understand where the person is coming from. And then assume a sense of responsibility. We're here responsible, trying to do the right thing for the city. So as a result, it's not about my issue, and I want to pull, you know, push my agenda forward. At the end of the day, what is best for the city? And try, you know, maybe my, my thoughts are not the best thoughts, but when I listen to someone else who's going to present something that makes sense, we need to be open-minded and try to understand and do the right thing at the end of the day. Ask, inquire, assume good intention, and then zoom out. Sometimes, you know, we're so focused on the one thing that we want, but maybe we're not seeing the big picture. When we zoom out and try to listen, and try to listen to different opinion, then we can, we can understand where the other person is coming from and probably do the right thing at the end of the day. Everybody wants the best for the city. We all love the city, we made the city our home, so we want the best for the city. And I thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, then we have Ashley. Yeah, if she's not quite online yet, then I can move to...
Yeah, she is on there. I just promoted her. Oh, there she is.
All right, Ashley, hopefully you can hear us.
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. Okay, so, hi again. My answer for the question is that hindsight is 2020. Decisions are made at a certain point, and later it becomes evident that the best decision was not selected. Working on the Planning Commission, this can easily happen. I believe it is critical to consider all positions, but in the end, you must select what is best for the city and the majority of the residents. I know people aren't a fan of change, but if planned, it can be amazing for the whole community. The key thing I would do to make sure I don't let value conflicts sway my decisions is to think of the future and not the past. to think of the future and not the past. Things are the way they are. If it ought to be something else, we should look for a path to get there, but we have to be realistic, and Simamish will keep growing. It's a fabulous community, and it has a lot to offer. Pretending that the city can stop development is not realistic. The key thing to focus on is strong planning and good codes, so that growth adds to the community, not takes away. And I think the key way to accomplish this is by focusing on the future and not the best. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And last, we have Ms. Dina Anne. She was in person, and then I don't know if she...
Yeah, she informed me she would be going home for the next part, and I just have an email here from her.
Perfect.
Okay. So I'll see if she's on here.
Thank you.
There she is. Okay.
Hello, we can hear you.
Perfect. Thank you for taking me on video for this portion. Oh, we're going, it's going?
Yes, I'm so sorry. Yeah. When you are ready.
Thank you. Thank you so much. For the city of Simamish, regardless of value conflicts, I think is a need of infrastructure before growth. We need to look at ideas that relieve congestion, like turning all the lights on Issaquah Pine Lake Road into roundabouts as an idea, or how every citizen of Simamish could actually attend a concert at the park, at Pine Lake or Beaver Lake, could actually park in the parking lot, because we've created multi-level parking. It would be cautious of me, but I would suggest the need to create more opportunity to easily reach any destination before we continue to create destinations. And like our previous commission hopeful, there's always going to be growth in any area that has undeveloped land, and that's just the way it goes. I think the residents of anywhere USA would like to see their inconvenience alleviated ahead of growth so that they can enjoy the growth. So if I was able to be part of the Planning Commission, I would be a sound voice for, will that, how will that impact the city and how will all of us members be able to get around? For me, like some of the other folks that you have there tonight, it's very difficult to get around if I can't park right at where an event is going on, or if I have to try to walk to it, I really cannot, so I don't get to participate. So that would probably be a perspective I would like to bring to the table for the city of Simamish. And we have such unique opportunities here and a wealth of opportunity in the coffers for a lot of the infrastructure to take place. So I think it'd be really fun to look at that along with new growth. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. All right, council, so we will vote on our ballots and give it to Krista and our city clerk, and with a 10-minute break-ish for voting, and you guys to tally work. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Scott.
No, I was going to suggest that, Mayor.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I saw your mic on, so. And so you guys can tabulate while we're out and about.
So you're going to fill them all at one time?
Yes.
And then we'll tell?
Okay.
Yeah.
That makes sense. I see.
That's what I would have suggested, is to do one group at a time, so that you can see who's been picked, and then you know for the secondary...
So no break?
No break.
You ready for arts? Okay. Yeah, that's fine. Yeah.
Start with the Arts Commission?
The Planning Commission really doesn't... I'm going to put out the... I'm going to do a live... I kind of like having a friend in this, really, because you think I said what you're going to say. I don't know how long this goes, but it goes on the... I think it's...
As we are tallying the votes, I just wanted to appreciate and thank all the applicants. I think it's been so wonderful to hear the passion and just, you know, giving back to the community. I think that is so important. And I know each one of you, be it on the commission or not, you will continue, I know, to contribute to our city, to make it better. And I think, you know, many of you spoke, I think you're so inspiring, and I know you'll hold us accountable as well to do better. So I just again want to thank you all for applying. And, you know, should you not get on the commission for some reason, because I know we have some places where we had more applicants than others, I would highly encourage you to continue to be involved in the city. Send us your comments, you know, again, you know, attend commission meetings, and just, you know, thank you for all that you do. So I just wanted to say thanks.
Thank you. I think another point of clarification, as this is totaling, I know some have different year-end terms, so I don't know if we've decided if the top vote-getters get the longest terms or... Yes. Okay. Thank you. Was that all so discussed already? Okay. So we have three positions. Position four, that ends 31 January 26. Position five and position six, that both end 31 January 27. So position four, congratulations to Rachel Yo. For position five, congratulations to Jen Shetterly. And position six, congratulations to Ashley Arrington, unless she's already on a... Yeah. Perfect. Yeah, so four, and then five is Shetterly, and six is Arrington. Great. Thank you so much. So next up is Parks and Rec.
And just for clarification, I will go over this later to make sure I didn't have any operator error, but I was very tedious and slow. I hope I got it right.
Yeah, that was my only other question, if Ashley had a position that she was and wanted to stay that number, but I think it'll be fine. Yeah.
I was... I was going to say, I suppose we're done speaking, Karen. None of the... No discussion. What the hell, though? Man, I'm going to go. 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 I'm going to go.
All right. Thank you. Okay, so we have the three positions, position two, six, and seven. So position two, that ends 31 January 25, we'll go to, looks like Jason Shirk. Position six, ending 31 January 27, we'll go to Roberto Ruiz. And position seven, with seven votes, January 31, 2027, we'll go to Chris Davis. Great. Congratulations. Roberto was six.
And just for the sake of transparency, on the Arts Commission votes, we did have one council member who did not submit three, so that's, it won't add up correctly, but we had one abstention.
It wasn't me. Because of the math thing. Okay. All right. Human Services, I believe, is up next. I think also while we're waiting, we do still have the Beaver Lake Management District Advisory Board with one vacancy available for those, if we open it back up, is what I assume we will do. So thank you, and congratulations. So position one will go to Vera, and position two to Mary, and both end 31 January 2027. So, thank you. Congratulations, Sayed and Wassim. So position three will go to Sayed, and position four to Wassim, and both end 31 January 2027. So thank you, everybody. And now we will take, let's do 14 minutes and come back at 8:10. Just give everyone a moment. So thank you. Okay, so first, I will pass it off to Krista, who wanted to clarify some counting.
Yeah, I wanted to clarify the voting for the Human Services Commission. We did have one council abstention on that, so the final tally was seven to six, but both are appointed. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you so much, Krista. All right, so next is a presentation on the Housing Action Plan Housing Strategy Discussion. So I believe David will be taking over.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, David Pyle, Department of Community Development. We are promoting our consultant and our project team right now. While we do that, I'll go ahead and introduce the topic. We are in the process of developing a housing action plan. We've been working on the housing needs assessment. You've heard from us on that. We have taken an initial list of topics, or excuse me, a list of strategies and tools here tonight for you to consider. Elliot Weiss with Community Attributes, our consultant, working on the Housing Action Plan, will be leading us through a discussion about appropriateness of certain tools that can then be taken to the Planning Commission for further review and further refinement. I'll turn it over to Elliot. He might take a second here to get oriented, as he's just been brought up and promoted. So Elliot, I'll turn it over to you when you're ready.
I believe I'm ready, as long as you all can hear me.
We can hear you. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, David, and thanks, Mayor and Council. Happy to be here with you again. The last time I was here to speak with you, we provided an update on the housing needs assessment, and at this point, we've pivoted from the housing needs assessment into sort of the next phase of this project, which is the actual strategies that form the backbone of the action plan. And so if we can advance the slide, we will get a graphic to summarize where we're at in the project. As you can see, there are four major tasks at left: community engagement, housing needs assessment, strategy development, and housing action plan drafting, review, and adoption. The community engagement is sort of an ongoing task with periods of more intense activity, which is what those color bars represent. You'll recall that we did a statistically valid and a public survey from May through July, so that's what that band represents. Then we came back and did some... Then we came back and did some community meetings and surveys around these strategies themselves in November and December, as well as, in between those time periods, some focus groups, some targeted technical interviews, and other outreach. The housing needs assessment wrapped up earlier in the fall, and we brought our final draft to you. That housing needs assessment had several findings, and we have grouped or coalesced those findings into four themes that are going to be instrumental for our discussion tonight. I'll speak to what those four are on the next slide, but it's important to understand that they very much arise from the findings and the data in the housing needs assessment. Right now, we're sort of in the thick of strategy development. Our approach to this has been to start with a very long list, a list that is too long to fully implement, and then to narrow down or select from there based on the appropriateness for Samamish and the needs that were identified in the housing needs assessment. And shortly here, in late January and into February, as we get that narrower list of strategies that we believe are appropriate for Samamish to implement more fully, we'll start to draft the actual housing action plan, and we'll be bringing it to you in future meetings for review and subsequent adoption by the end of June of this year. So, the goal tonight of this discussion is to take this preliminary list of strategies and to get your discussion and feedback on which ought to be advanced for a more implementation-focused conversation with the Planning Commission at their meeting next week on January 19. In order to facilitate that conversation, staff and the project team have preliminarily sort of identified some strategies that may be relatively more appropriate or relatively less appropriate for Samamish. And the criteria used in making that preliminary determination, and I stress that it's preliminary because we really think that at this point, all of these strategies are on the table until you all, as a council, tell us that they are not. But the criteria nonetheless were alignment with staff's existing work program, fit for Samamish based on current conditions as documented in the housing needs assessment, broader, and in particular, public support for a given strategy. You'll see that those are outlined in blue, that's how we're signifying that on the slides. But that comes from some of the survey work done in November and December, as well as earlier with the statistically valid and the public survey last spring and early summer. And then finally, potential impact, so how impactful could any individual strategy be relative to the themes in the HNA? On the next slide, we'll look at those four themes. The first was to address regional affordable housing requirements, which has to do with the planning frameworks that the city is required to plan under, given its obligations under GMA. Theme two is increasing housing opportunities for Samamish workers, specifically with your workers who do not currently live in Samamish, perhaps having distinct needs or distinct demographic or economic characteristics. The third theme was accommodating changing demographics and resident housing need. So, how are existing Samamish residents' housing needs currently being met or not met by the housing stock that is available in Samamish? And how would that housing stock have to change in order to accommodate future shifts in demographic characteristics or demand? And finally, theme four, maintaining Samamish's sense of place, and we know that that's really important. So, as we grow, or we understand that Samamish will grow, there are certain strategies that have more to do with how that growth is managed to ensure its consistency with a vision that is supported by the community for Samamish in the future. So, with those four in mind, we'll take them one at a time, and I think I'll pause on each of the four slides for those four themes, so that we can have that discussion and make this a little bit more interactive. But we did have four questions that we thought we might keep in mind to guide the discussion. One is just, which questions do you have, or which strategies would you like more information about? I know there was some information in the Agenda Bill that does go a little bit deeper than what we're able to do in this presentation, but we can also have some discussion about any that you would like to bring up more specifically. The second is, which are least likely to impact the theme, or maybe have substantial implementation challenges for Samamish that would be a reason to perhaps not advance that one? On the flip side, which are most likely to impact the theme, or which are going to be most impactful in addressing these four themes? And for those that are most impactful, this is a critical question, what factors or issues should be considered for effective implementation? Because any answers to question four here are items that we would look to address explicitly in our time with the Planning Commission before we return to you with a refined list of strategies. So with that, I think we can get into it. Theme one, addressing regional affordable housing requirements. You'll see the color bar, those on the left deemed by staff in an initial review to be relatively more appropriate, those on the right to be relatively less appropriate for Samamish. So, at the more appropriate end of the spectrum, density bonuses, TDR, or Transfer Development Rights Program, inclusionary zoning, permit fee waivers, target area increased density. And on the right-hand side, the less appropriate end of the spectrum, in this case, an affordable housing levy. Those in the middle may be appropriate, but have some additional implementation considerations. And then the three that ranked highest among survey responses for folks who had participated in some of the public meetings along the way were the Transfer of Development Rights Program, the Inclusionary Zoning, and the multifamily tax exemption. So, I will pause there for questions and discussion on this first theme.
Councilmember Brenda Purey.
Thank you, Mayor. Elliot, I had a quick question for this particular slide. When we say regional affordable housing requirements, where do the, where does the legal requirement come in? So, for example, if we have new legislation that comes through where we are required to do some, you know, housing for a particular AMI, does that fall in this, or is that like a different theme? And can you help us understand maybe what is, what's meant by like the regional housing requirement?
Yes, I can, thank you for the question, councilmember. It is intended to capture requirements by percentage AMI, which at this point are not yet formally adopted, but are anticipated to be. So, it's a planning framework that we believe the city will be planning under. We just don't know the specific unit counts by affordability level yet. And that's a result largely of HB 1220 that passed recently at the legislature. Other frameworks to consider, just under GMA more broadly, there has always been a growth target. I know I'm not telling you anything you don't know on that front, right? But just the idea of accommodating a certain amount of growth could fall underneath here. So, that's where certain things like density bonuses might come in. If you were having trouble accommodating a sufficient quantity of growth, then you could look at a tool like that. Now, density bonuses can also be structured to target units at a certain percentage of AMI, so they're appropriate here even with HB 1220 and its implications for future growth. But we're very much trying with theme one to address those types of requirements.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, thank you. I'm just, I guess I missed sort of, how did you determine what was in the more appropriate versus less appropriate columns?
Yeah, again, it's a preliminary staff assessment, so it's not set in stone. We just wanted to give some grounding to this conversation. The four criteria were alignment with staff work program, fit for Samamish based on local conditions, public or stakeholder support based on the survey data that we received and participation at the public meetings that were held, and the potential impactfulness of any given strategy.
Okay, and the ones that, I know you said this, but the ones that are highlighted in blue mean what exactly?
They were the ones that received higher levels of support comparatively in the survey responses.
Okay. So, this list, is this like, and I'm not meaning this in any, like, I'm not, like, baiting you, I'm just curious. Like, how did we come up with this list? Is this like the entirety of all the tools in the toolbox? Or this was just, like, how did we get the preliminary list?
Yeah, it's more or less all the tools in the toolbox. Certainly, just on this slide alone, it is not, but across the four themes, we aim for a pretty exhaustive preliminary list. Part of that's just based on what is statutorily enabled in Washington State, or what powers does the city have through its development regulations, its zoning laws, et cetera. So, it sort of formed out of those things that the city can regulate or is allowed to do.
Okay, because I'd love to see more of the data behind, like, the effectiveness, for example. Or, you know, how did the assessment get made of the, because you said, like, the fit for the current conditions, but we're actually planning for the future, we're not planning for what we have, we're actually planning for what the future will hold. So, like, when I looked at a lot of the demographic data, right, we clearly have some shifting demographics, right? We have some very large shifts in the age groups that are growing and shrinking here in Samamish. And so, looking at that compared to what we think the future will hold, and, you know, as an example, right, if the trend continues and we see more aging population, and we see more people potentially going on to a fixed income, and we think that inflation is going to stay high, that's going to have a big impact on who and what income levels we might have that need affordable housing in the community types of things. So, I'd love to see some of that data in terms of the appropriateness. And then I guess, this particular one, it's kind of odd to me to use the survey results to determine, like, what we should use because so few people who currently live here fall into the categories that we need to address. And so, while I think it's important to understand what the community might think is important, someone who might be in the 150% AMI maybe isn't the best person to determine how we achieve housing in the 0 to 30% AMI. Thanks.
Excellent points, thank you, councilmember. Just a couple clarifications. The survey that spoke most directly to these strategies, and that actually asked individuals to rank them, was not restricted to residents, it was a public meeting. So, I can't tell you, based on the responses, how many of those reflect perspectives from outside the community. Just wanted to clarify that when we talk about this blue, it is not coming from the statistically valid survey earlier in the project that only went to Samamish residents. And then, I think we very much wish to identify tools that can respond to either known or anticipated trends. And I'm hopeful that in theme three, accommodating changing demographics and resident housing need, some of those tools will be forward-looking. I probably misspoke in saying that it was only current conditions, it may be current conditions or trends, but we're hoping to be forward-looking here.
Okay, thanks, appreciate it.
Deputy Mayor Liam. So, what I'm hearing is that those three blue boxes are reflective of the survey, and I'm very curious to hear what staff is recommending, and really kind of the experts and people and want people that know, like, more about these different areas. While I think the survey is great, and, you know, I appreciate hearing from our residents, I think the, like, hearing from staff, and they are more of the knowledge, they have more knowledge. Because I'm kind of confused as to why, like, development agreements isn't in there, or density bonuses. So, I would definitely, like, hear, I definitely want to hear more from staff.
Yeah, and David, you can perhaps weigh in, since these have been staff conversations, but our intent with the appropriateness scale is to more or less represent staff's preliminary assessment of them. So, I believe staff came together and kind of had a discussion about these, weighed out the various criteria I spoke to, and decided to sort of align these strategies where they're at on that spectrum now. But we did not want to, and do not want to, give the impression that those on the left have already been pre-selected and we're just looking for your blessing in taking those forward. We want to make that more of a constructive dialogue.
Okay, thank you.
I wanted to just, sorry, quickly add one thing. And we wanted to include the survey, even though it was a very small number. One of the things that council had talked about was sharing back to the community what we heard. And so, this was an effort to show that and integrate that into this presentation around that survey. And I'm sure if there are specific strategies that you are interested in staff's opinion on, such as development agreements or density bonuses, David can probably do the best job of giving more background into why we put it into either more appropriate or less appropriate or in the middle.
And, thank you, Miriam, and I'm happy to answer any questions about any one of these strategies or tools. Keep in mind that it's not so much a quantitative exercise of assigning, you know, scores and weighing them. This is more qualitative, based on our judgment and experience in working with these tools. You know, we have either applied these ourselves, or worked with people who have applied them and peripherally learned from that in meetings and whatnot, or we have attended trainings or learned about them in our careers over time. And there are some definite pros and cons to these tools. And I think, you know, trying to understand about why the affordable housing levy was put over on the right as less appropriate is that, that is an entire program in itself that is not in our work plan today. So, going back to what Elliot said about how we ranked these and how we tried to group these, that an affordable housing levy is a really major undertaking, and it's not something that we're afraid of or not wanting to do. It's just more, it didn't fit into the current work program. And that puts the city in the role of either funding or building the housing. And that's, you know, not to say there's, it's not valuable and it's not important, but it's something that is outside of our current work program that we currently have and forecasted work program and staffing level.
And before I go to Councilmember Howe, I think I did have a question. I know you have the four questions for each of the four themes, and I know this is a direction that you guys would like. And so, I didn't know, are we looking for, what would you like to get out of this?
Yeah, there's no specific number, I don't think, but in order to use our time effectively with the Planning Commission, we do need some focus. And so, for each of these slides, if there are a handful that are of interest for additional sort of implementation-focused work, sort of reconciling some of the challenges that we know are out there, or thinking further about how the program might be designed, that is what we're looking for.
Okay, so we can give you, like, the ones we like on here, plus if there's any extra from exhibit two that we would like to add, potentially? Or not that, these are it?
I am okay with any from exhibit two as well, but.
I mean, I don't want to give us more options, but I just want to make sure everyone feels heard.
I think in some cases, some of the items in exhibit two have been combined.
Okay.
And streamlined a bit, so they should still be in here, they might just be worded differently or grouped with similar things.
Perfect, thank you. Sorry, Councilmember Howe.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I thought that multifamily tax exemption didn't work as an incentive. So, I just had some questions about some of these that are here, that I just wondered, do they, do they work? And is there an unintended consequence? And so, is it possible that we could look at these, if this was the subset or the selection set we were looking at, in terms of, can you help me understand, for example, with REIT two, how much would that be, by when? And when cities that have used it, has there been blowback? So, I'm kind of looking for more context around it. I don't, data is great, but actually, the story, the narrative around it would even be more helpful, frankly. Just to understand, why do we think that this would work here? Because a story that I have heard from developers is that they're not interested in tax exemptions, they're not interested in fee waivers, because, you know, they want to make their coin and get out oftentimes. And so, is, does it mean that it's a different type of developer we're targeting, and that's why it would work?
So, I can take that one, Elliot, if that's okay? So, there was a training that I went to some number of years ago, and I thought, you know, this really stood out to me when they were trying to explain some of these tools and how they fit together. And to build a project, you need, so think about a five-gallon bucket full of funds. You need that five-gallon bucket full of funds to build a project. And with a standard for-profit development, they have their funding stream, they've done their, you know, performas, all the things they do with that to understand how much it's going to cost. There's some cost overruns they've accounted for, all those things, right? They're going to be successful, they have their funding. But for an affordable housing project with a not-for-profit builder, a not for profit builder who's building, they need a whole host of tools to help them fill that bucket.
That makes sense.
So so what we're trying to do here is to add some tools to the toolkit to help enable some of those not for profit builders, or even some of those mixed builders that build some for profit, some not for profit, to be able to make their project work. Right now, we have a limited number of tools available to us in our code. We, you know, we do use inclusionary zoning, we do use TDRs, we'd like to tune those up. We'd like to learn more about how those could be better applied. Multifamily tax exemption is one that stands out, that is known pretty well across the region, and that that not for profit builders or mixed builders, we've heard appreciate because it can help them fill that bucket.
Okay, so for this particular slide, we are targeting a different kind of developer, not a, is that correct?
I would say that going forward, we are going to need to start to target that different type of builder.
Okay.
And that is done through partnerships, like Arch, for example. We have that started, but we need to expand on that.
Okay, I think that helps me understand kind of where you're headed with this. I do think that having a, so it's a good start. I guess I'll say that. It's a good start.
Councilmember Tree.
Miriam, thank you for following through on that public's request to see the information. I really appreciate that. Second, when looking at this theme specifically and engaging this, and thanks for that explanation, David, on the bucket, because I would have, on transfer of development rights, if if it's with, if the transfer of the development rights are within the city that keeps that benefit in the city, then I think that is more appropriate. Inclusionary zoning is a catch 22 for 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 me as far as, as Councilmember Howe said, what's the unintended consequences, or what are some of the consequences that may be in the negative? I get I get the positive side of it, but but I so I think the Planning Commission should look into that. That would be a good thing for them to look in. The permit fee waivers, fine, because we're looking at affordable housing. How do we make it a cost less? And then that targeted area of increased density, I might move that down a little, down into the middle and just say, if you're going to leave that there, which I would, is have the Planning Commission look at, well, where are those targeted areas that we could increase the density? And if it's if it's in areas where there's currently already concrete and asphalt, then then we should definitely make a move to see how we can enhance affordable housing in those areas that are already not going to damage the environment. I'd completely get rid of that surplus land program. If I've got one on here that I'm in the real estate excise tax, I'm not going to tax, you know, I like Robin Hood, but come on. Tax the rich to feed the poor. I get I get the concept, and I and I support helping people. But I think I'm not the guy who wants to tax our community. So I would just remove those two completely. That, David, the only other question I had on this one is, and I don't think the levy will work, by the way, but if you want to have them look at it, I think you're probably wasting their time. But I would probably move that one, too. But this bottom one, concomitant agreements, even when I read that, I was confused. So
It's quite a word, concomitant agreements.
Sure.
And this is one that that many cities in the Puget Sound have used historically, mostly in the, I would want to say, the 70s and 80s, when they were going through a series of rezones and large rezones. And what those are is, is it's it's a method by which you can you can give benefit to a property owner through a rezone, but that property owner is obligated at the point of realizing the the density potential down the line to give back in the form of affordability. So you might see a concomitant agreement that says, you know, 20% of the units developed as a result of this rezone on the property shall be within the 80% AMI range. And then what happens is, the challenge with that one is that you have to track it, and you have to know that that condition exists on the rezone. So you have to have a system to track those. The other is, there are many program, many cities have, cities that have used concomitants have also adopted programs by which they allow for a fee in lieu, so that you can, there's a method of calculating out what it would cost, what the cost differential is, and then they pay the fee, and then they build 100% affordable units. So but that fee then goes into to fund the bucket of another project, if you will.
Yeah, so I think we're a young city, and that seems to be something I would look to the future for, and maybe not at this time. Back to you, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Have you gone yet? All right, Councilmember O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mayor. So just looking at affordable housing requirements, and I had noticed on, I think it was on page 24 of our packet, where it kind of gave the overview of Theme One, and where they kind of scored on the surveys. And so there was one item on there that I don't see up on our slide tonight, which was town center density. It scored like 38%, as did developer agreements, which did make it onto the slide. So I just wondered if maybe we could add that on there, so we could have some kind of a discussion about that.
So I think that was targeted, we bundled that under targeted area increased density.
Oh, okay. All right, great. I was not aware of that. Then we did have some public comment from Jerry Norman, and he kind of outlined some kind of affordable housing strategies that he was interested in. And I thought some of them might be worth considering, he's also on Planning Commission, that we would think about some of these issues. And they may belong in other themes, but I just wanted to give recognition to public comment and bring it into the conversation. He obviously, he talked about TDRs, which we have up there, and ADUs, which I know come into another theme that we're going to discuss, but things like tiny homes, which would come in under affordable housing, and if that's if that's kind of a theme or a strategy that we may consider in Sumamish also, and talk about small lot sizes and et cetera. So and I think that might come into some other parts of the slide that we already have. So I think things like other forms of housing, other smaller forms of housing that have kind of come into the public purview in the last number of years, like ADUs, like tiny homes. And I think those are something that would be worth discussing with Planning Commission, too.
Thank you. Elliot, does that, do those fit in one of the other themes?
We do. The next theme, Theme Two, has a single box for accessory dwelling units and tiny homes. And so we fully anticipate that being part of the conversation. And I should just note that it's very possible that any of these tools could support, in the end, more than one of the themes. We've just tried to put it in or on the slide that it is most aligned with.
All right. So I think I do like everything on the far left. The only thing I was thinking about is switching permit fee and development agreements. But I'm good with staff's recommendation or whomever, I'm not sure who exactly, a combination. But I do like what's in the more appropriate category. And then I think we have Councilmember Stewart?
Oh.
Sorry, Deputy Mayor Lam?
So I'm going to go through my list now. I wanted to give everybody else a chance to talk. I do agree with everything on the far left. I wanted to mention inclusionary zoning, where it says that developers can either provide affordable units within a development or provide an in lieu fee. And I totally disagree with that. I believe that they shouldn't be able to opt out of that. And the other ones were the REIT Two. I do believe that we should do that, except it should be graduated. The people that are selling their homes for more than 1.5 million should be paying more. And people that are paying, that are like selling their homes for like 3 million should be paying way more. And you could say the same thing for people that are selling their homes for less than a million, you know. But I absolutely think that this would help pay for some of these affordable units. I also think that for sales and use tax credits, that we should impose a charge on luxury items, such as expensive cars and luxury boats. And those were my comments. Thanks.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you. And I appreciate this discussion a lot and and all the work here. A couple more questions. Is there a way for us to understand? So David, you and the rest of staff, right, have said, hey, these are the things that we think work the best. And that's great, because we want to start with the things that are going to have the [inaudible]. Again, I, one of the things I really love, and I talked about this before, the climate thing, that wedge diagram that King County came up with, it was a great way to say, here's, here's the goal of what we have to get to, right? Here's, here's where we have to get to. So with, you know, affordable housing requirements, we have certain goals, you know, numbers we have to get to. If we do this, we believe, based on our best available data, that that will get us this percentage of the way there. So if we were to implement the five things on the left, will that get us there? Will that get us past there? Will that get us almost there? Is that something that you guys are going to analyze? Because once we kind of go into that next level, like, this is sort of that first level of this is our experience. But once we start to really go into that next level analysis, we might find that, you know, development agreements, or, you know, the REIT Two or whatever, might actually have a bigger impact. So is that, is that coming in the next stage?
So I'll look to Elliot with what your first reaction is on that. I have some more on after I hear what Elliot might offer.
Yeah, my first reaction is that we would like to do as much of that as we are able to do. But it's sort of the million dollar question. And I think with precision, it's probably unknowable. We don't know how much development interest there's going to be, you know, where the market demand is going to shift within the region in the future. And some of these things, like density bonuses, require underlying market demand. So it may be impossible to quantify it perfectly, but we want to, and this is some of the quote unquote, more implementation focused work that we were referring to on another slide, do as much of that as we are able to do, so that we're making sure that we've got a reasonably high degree of confidence that what we're advancing will be impactful and will be impactful toward meeting the specific requirements that Sumamish is planning for. So in Sumamish's case, the preliminary numbers that have been released, and there have been multiple iterations of preliminary numbers that have changed over time, but it's been relatively consistently the case that there's been a very large share of units at the 30% AMI level. And those are very difficult to get most developers to produce because of the challenging economics they present. Certain of these programs, strategies, tools have design considerations that can allow you to target those deeper levels of affordability, whereas others do not. So I think part of our thinking about how we do design these, and the design won't be fully baked, what some of those implementation considerations are, is how well do they align with some of those anticipated needs that that are coming down the road. And then lastly, before I turn it over to David, I would just say, we certainly wouldn't anticipate that, you know, in 2023, your housing needs assessment is going to get everything perfect for the next 20 years. I think this is absolutely something you're going to have to revisit. And there will be some pivots required in the future to make sure that you're continuing to prioritize the things that are most impactful, because what we think is most impactful now and for the next few years, you know, may not be responsive to the conditions that you are planning in five or 10 years from now. So those are some initial thoughts.
I can add on to that. So it's it's timely that you asked that question, because I we just pushed out an agenda bill for the 17th that is loaded with information on housing requirements, on the numbers that we're forecasting to be assigned on, and it's heavily bootstrapped with connections back to the source of where all those items come from. So if there was an agenda bill to spend some time with, and, you know, drink a cup of coffee and spend about two hours maybe reading this, because it's pretty dense. And if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to Scott or myself as you read through it, because it's very complex. But the state just recently in December issued, I'm looking at the agenda bill right now, a draft land capacity guidance document. And what that is, is it's a methodology that we're going to have to follow to determine whether or not the tools that we're including in our housing action plan and our housing element of our comprehensive plan are ultimately adequate to provide the housing that the state and the county have have directed that we provide through assignment of affordable housing targets. And as Elliot said, you know, those targets are out there, and the state, the county is, is a description of this in the agenda bill as well, is inching their way towards finalizing those through amendment of countywide planning policies that ultimately will probably be adopted by the King County Council sometime in the fall of this year. And we're looking at around 1,400 units of zero to 30% AMI, 900 of those being permanent housing, I think, 500 of those being permanent supportive housing, and something along the lines of 400 or 500 units of of 30 to 50, and then another 300 or 400 units of 50 to 80, and then zero 80 to 100, and zero 100 to 120 units. The total number adds up to 2,100 units, which is our growth target, as you know, which was recently passed by the King County Council. Just, it's also noted in this agenda bill. So not to give too much away on that, but we're planning to have a follow on conversation on this topic on the 17th with you all. So just a week out, where we're going to talk about how these tools might fit in and where they might fit in, and land use and housing in the city. So I'm looking forward to that one. But tonight, mostly, we're trying to focus on getting just your reaction from you about which ones of these stand out, and which ones of these do you really think we should focus our attention on? Not to say that any one of these couldn't enter back into the conversation later on, say, in, you know, early '24, if we identify something that we need to do, or the state changes the the context and adds some new legislation.
Excellent. Thank you. So I think that's really helpful. And I do think that that might actually change some of these, for example, right? Because if we do have to build, or create, I shouldn't say build, if we have to create 1,400 affordable housing units in the zero to 30%, and I think you said something in the neighborhood of 500 have to be permanent supportive, that may make that affordable housing levy or something like that more necessary, because that may be the only way to achieve that. And I don't know. I'm, again, I'm kind of just throwing that out there. It also raised a great question, or another point that I think, Elliot, you were talking about this. I think we need to also, one of the things we do in our projects at work is when we're proposing something, we have to say, what are our measures of success? And how are we going to measure that? So I think that's another thing to be thinking about as we look at these things. How are we going to measure these things as we go so that we can course correct over time? Because we're not going to get it perfect, and we we probably shouldn't allow perfection to get in the way of progress, right? We have to take our best available information and make good decisions, and then be willing to adjust as we go. So I think that's going to be important. One other question, when we looked at the four criteria, one, one thing that was missing in my mind was, how do any of these things align with combating climate change? Right? Because the approaches that we take, some of the approaches may not align or may not improve our ability to combat climate change while others might. And I know we haven't built out, I know that's the next presentation, and we don't know exactly what our climate action plan is going to be. But I feel like these things are so co-mingled, we need to be considering that as we go here as well. And then two things that don't seem to be on here at all. One is, as you talked about partnerships, where does that fit into this? That feels like a pretty important strategy. And should it have a box? Or is it just implied in some other box?
I think it fits under one of the later themes, Elliot, if I'm correct.
We've got it as being just slightly better aligned with Theme Four, but would be supportive probably across all of the themes.
Okay. And then another one that feels like it's kind of missing is like, what about if we just made more requirements, right? Like, right now, the town center has a requirement that 10% of the housing be affordable at or below a certain level. But could we just have more requirements for affordable housing, like just more policy? Is that a tool?
Yeah, I think that's in line with the inclusionary zoning tool. So the the town center requirements currently, I think, would be best described as inclusionary zone.
Got it. Okay. Got it. Okay. And then last but not least, just to get clarification, the three boxes that are highlighted, because they were the ones that aligned with the input from the community, what was that criteria? Because when I look at the data, like, it doesn't seem to align exactly with the average level of support, or with maybe the combination of strongly agree plus agree, or whatever. So how did you pick what the top three were?
It should align with the percentage of strongly agree and agree.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, I think we have Councilmember Treen. And I know we still have three themes left. So, Councilmember Treen.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. That was going to be my point, too, that this is a big picture look at it. And I thought, if my understanding was correct, it was to provide direction to the staff as to what we would like to see the Planning Commission work on. Now, if I'm mistaken on that, then I will change my approach on the way I'm going after things. But I think we have three more themes to go through. And so I think it's our recommend, or providing direction, if I'm not mistaken, Mayor.
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you.
I think really what we're looking for in each of these themes is, if you have questions on what the tool or strategy is, happy to answer those. And also, if something pops out to you or stands out to you, or I think, you know, you're wondering why something like affordable housing levy is in the less appropriate category, we're happy to answer that question as well. We're really just trying to get a across the board sort of reaction so that we can take that and review the meeting and tally up sort of the direction that we got, and then report that back to the Planning Commission.
All right. Thank you. Theme two. Elliot, please.
Absolutely. Theme two is increasing housing opportunities for Samamish workers. On the more appropriate end of the spectrum, we've got minimum required densities, missing middle zoning, design guidelines, housing incentive marketing program, and then there's ADUs in tiny homes, which was referenced earlier in the conversation. The other end of the spectrum, stability programs for homeowners and renters, and a short term rental ordinance, and then a slate of options there that are sort of in the middle.
All right, Council. Councilmember Napuray?
Thank you, Mayor. Elliot, can you elaborate a little bit more on the design guidelines, please, and what that entails?
Yeah, what it entails is something of an open question. I mean, that would be the implementation focused work we'd be looking to do with Planning Commission, based on some of the considerations that you all advanced. Design guidelines are used broadly throughout the region to try to ensure that new development meets certain expectations for form and aesthetics, largely. They can regulate different aspects of building design in different communities, which is to say they're entirely discretionary in how communities approach them. In certain cases, there are required design review processes that accompany design guidelines. I don't know, David, maybe you can say more about that.
I think where I was also going with this is like, does that entail having like an architectural board or design board? I know we've talked about that in the past. Or is that more on the development guidelines and the code updates that we're doing? Like, where does that fit in?
It could include a design review board, but it could also be administrative. Currently, we have design requirements for the town center. And those are applied by the staff, and ultimately, administrative decisions are issued and appealable to the hearing examiner. Keeping in mind that if you were to add a design review board or something along those lines, that that is a fairly intensive staff process and does come with a cost to the city, because you have to staff that and you have to feed it. It takes a lot of staff
Councilmember Howe?
Actually, this kind of dovetails into the question I was going to ask about staff time, because I was looking at some of these and wondered about homeowner and renter stability program, for example, or the housing incentive marketing program. That appears that that would take staff time to manage those. Is that a fair assessment? Because as I look at the stability program in specific, it doesn't sound like we're a bank, we're not giving anybody money, but we're providing counseling. So I don't know if that's a service where we hook people up to that kind of counseling and assistance. Or are we a bank? And are we making micro loans?
So some cities do have, they do serve as a bank that make micro loans. There are people that go through certain periods of winter in their lives where they're not as prosperous, and
Oh, no, I get it.
They're unable to replace the roof or take care of essential maintenance on their homes. And you don't want them to lose their homes. You're able to offer up a short term, low interest sort of loan to get them through. Those are staff intensive. But there are third parties that can help administer those, and the city could, through partnerships, help offset the cost by, you know, by scaling it up through some sort of a nonprofit or Arch or something like that.
A shared resource that other cities also use.
A shared resource. Exactly. Another one example is a homeowner and rental stability program. And that might be, you know, a limit on the amount of rent increase that's allowed. There are currently cities that are exploring those. I know Arch is looking at some examples. Most cities adopt those under a right to enforce type of scenario, which means that they're not actually out there proactively enforcing it. What that means is that a tenant has the ability to file an appeal against a landlord, and it's taken to a hearing examiner, for example. And that's a very low staff intensity type of program. So there's different examples through here, although, you know, design guidelines can be fairly staff intensive. However, typically, those are offset by permit fees, because we do bill development applicants for applications and time spent. However, if you were then to bundle that with fee reductions, that cost then is passed off to the general fund of the city, because you're not able to recoup it.
Right. Okay. And just a quick question about short term rental ordinance, which is, man, that's flying around everywhere. Everybody's putting those onto their, into their jurisdictions now. Do we have a sense of how many Airbnbs and VRBOs we actually have in Samamish?
So we, it fluctuates wildly. We have had code enforcement, working on that and monitoring the websites that offer those, the platforms, if you will, that offer those. And, you know, I've seen reports of 30, I've seen reports of 50, I've seen 10. It just depends on the time of year.
Okay.
I also have noted that we historically have taken an approach of managing those around managing the impact, as opposed to managing the actual ownership or rentalship of those. If you're unable to manage the impact, then you have to consider a short term rental ordinance. And we have not, as of yet, seen a situation that we couldn't ultimately come to resolution on the neighbors with.
Right. Okay. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Treen?
Can you explain a little bit about this consolidating utility connections?
Sure, I'd be happy, Elliot, if that's okay. Consolidating utility connections comes in the form of efficiency of scale, where if you're building a fourplex, or a duplex, or by design, if you're able to add incentives through some sort of planning to development type scenario, where you are able to orient the buildings in such a manner that the utility connections are consolidated in one location, which drives significantly, can drive down the cost of development through consolidated sewer, gas, water, electrical connections. There aren't trenches going all over the place. And then that also brings the long term maintenance costs down.
Thank you. The second one would be, because my initial reaction would be, get rid of parking reductions. So with that being said, though, convince me that I should leave it on there. I mean, why would we want to reduce parking and put more cars on the street?
Sure. So if you go back to the prior theme, I don't know that you need to, Elliot, but if you were to consider the prior theme, one of those was targeted density increases, one of the tools. So if you were able to strategically increase density in areas that might be forward compatible with increase in transit connections and in frequency of transit, you would then be able to start to design optional homes that people could, there are people out there that want to buy homes that don't have parking because they don't want a car. And I'm hearing more and more from friends who just want to ditch their cars and want to ride, you know, walk or bike or ride transit. And what you'd be doing is looking at targeted areas of density increase along existing arterials within existing development on, you know, areas of impervious, that's already developed redevelopment, where you could add density and reduce parking requirements and try to promote transit.
So along to 28th, obviously, is the obvious answer there for where that would occur. And that's where our zones, those zones exist right now, the mixed use zones. So the mandatory mixed use zoning is, right now, we're just not mandatory? Or is, what's the addition? I know we have mixed use zoning, so what's the mandatory element to that one? And then I'm done.
So mandatory would be, in the event that one of the commercial nodes or commercial areas in the city wanted to pursue some sort of renovation of scale or redevelopment, that they would be required to include with the retail housing.
Thank you, David. I think most of these could move forward. The parking reduction would be initially the only one I would take out. And the last two may not be the time, but I don't know that. So, thanks. Back to you, Mayor.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I'll talk really fast. How does having design guidelines increase housing and decrease costs?
It does not necessarily increase housing or decrease house, cost, sorry, misspoke. But we have it aligned with theme two. It could arguably have been in theme four as well, because it's about accommodating the design features that are being demanded by Samamish residents, especially as they, you know, their life circumstances change and their housing needs change.
So I guess my question to staff is, why is that in our top most appropriate ways to increase housing opportunities?
So it's there because it's a method to mitigate or minimize impact from, as Elliot described it, I think, the architectural style and bulk and scale of buildings. And it will help us enable continuity as you see different types of land uses or different unit types start to be built, and will help with the, I guess, cohesion of the architecture of the community.
I think this is also best used in tandem with some of the others that do target, you know, the number of units being produced or the price at which they are produced. So if you looked at design guidelines in tandem with missing middle zoning, where you're having duplexes or triplexes in areas that had been at lower densities of development, those design guidelines ensure compatibility across the various unit types.
Great, thanks. And then my other question, David, is, I know we have ADU programs already, and they haven't really yielded much. So what would be different as, if this is what we think is a top strategy to increase this housing, what will we be able to do differently? Or, I guess, we're not going to get into that now. Do you think there are things we can do differently to actually make it yield more? Because it doesn't feel like it's going to be super productive.
Well, there's all sorts of dials and levers you could move in the development regulations that would help promote accessory dwelling units. Another one is also allowing them to be condominiumized and sold for form of ownership. That goes back to the public comment for this evening, is trying to find ways to increase homeownership. So looking at creative ways to allow accessory dwelling units to be built, but also allowing different forms of ownership over time, so that it really creates a separate unit, but it's part of the same, that primary residence that was built when it was originally designed.
Got it. Okay. And then, as far as parking reductions go, I'm all in favor of that, because the more we can make transit more attractive and driving your car less attractive, that's not only going to decrease people's costs, but it's going to also, again, align with our combating climate change goals as well. So I think that's, again, it's not a stand, in my mind, it doesn't feel like a standalone policy. It would go in tandem with other things. I also don't see on here increasing transit, which I do sort of feel like, like, design guidelines and parking reductions is something that probably needs to be on here that goes along with this. Also, if we're looking at how we increase housing opportunities for people working here, all the more reason why maybe they don't need a car, if we can create some intra-city transit options. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor Lamb?
I agree with the buckets and where they're located. My only comment is on the design guidelines, is that I would want more clarity on how, and kind of similar to what Councilmember Stewart was saying, how does that increase housing opportunities? I often see design guidelines as being more onerous and as being more of a preventive measure for housing being built, at a, like, more housing being built in general, because guidelines can be onerous. So, again, just would like to see those first.
All right, do we have anyone else?
Yeah, these are good. Thank you. And I know even on the notes, the design guidelines has partial of the mixed use design guidelines. So I don't know if those could be mixed or combined at all, to eliminate any confusion. But I think we are ready for theme three.
Theme three is accommodating changing demographics and resident housing needs, relatively fewer strategies on here. So on the left hand side, cottage housing, aging in place as a sort of programmatic option, leverage existing infrastructure, attached housing, which, very similar to missing middle housing, there's commonalities there, senior housing as a target for new development, and then small, single family homes, sort of identified at the less appropriate end of the spectrum.
All right, Council. Councilmember Napuray?
Thank you. I know this is very much focused on, you know, folks aging in place and getting smaller. But I think another lens that also needs to be applied here is, there might be families who might be, want to become multi-generational. So I don't see that here unless, like, maybe attached housing is something that's going to cover that. So just a question on that. Does that also, was that also a question? Or was that considered? And how can we accommodate or address multi-generational housing?
Thank you, Councilmember. That's a fantastic question. I don't believe that we initially wrote this content with that use case in mind. But in my view, the Aging in Place program could be interpreted as supportive of that. So if, I'm going back to the brochure that we used to facilitate our public meeting in December, and what we said in that brochure about the Aging in Place program, was that it is a program that could be developed to educate and assist residents in ways they can modify their homes or connect within home health care as their health and mobility changes. I think Samamish has a wealth of large homes that could be adapted with certain structural changes, you know, to the layout, thinking about, you know, creating kitchenettes, and then private spaces, separate outdoor entries, et cetera, as design features, that is consistent with that Aging in Place program, and maybe just a different version or incarnation of it.
I also think AD is kind of in line with what Elliot was saying. It's another form of that, too, even though it's not on this theme.
Particularly attached ADUs, yep.
Cool. Councilmember Howe?
Thank you. I was just going to say that there's such an intersection between the first slide and this slide, because affordability has to be a core component of this. That's in, I don't, you can't extract it, I think, is, I guess, how I'm looking at it. So there just has to be a, Chutes and Ladders, you know that game? It's really fun. It's awful. But that's how I see it connecting.
Anything else on that?
Just kidding. Did you want more? Because I can do more.
No, definitely not. Councilmember O'Farrell?
Thank you. I think, yeah, just like the overlaps we were just discussing, because I think what would be also relevant in theme three is the maintenance of existing housing stock. I know we talked about that in a previous slide, but I think it's also very relevant here. I know it came up at the Planning Commission meeting the other night, when they were talking about the greenhouse gas emissions, and talking about potential strategies to help homeowners maybe upgrade older homes that may not have the correct, are the latest insulation in their homes, the latest heating systems, you know, more their homes, the latest heating systems, you know, more eco-friendly heating systems in their homes, which are very expensive to replace and to repair. So maintaining of existing housing stock would also help people age in place. I mean, if you have, if you're living in a home that was built in 1980-something, it's going to need upgrading if you want to stay there and maintain it while you're there. I also think, so we're talking about accommodating changing demographics and residents' housing needs, but do we know what those needs are? Have we, do we have any data on what our gaps in our housing types are, given that we may be able to project where our demographics are going in the next 20, 30 years? So how much senior housing are we going to need? How much single, how much housing for single people are we going to need, or middle housing? Have we gotten the data on that? Do we have plans to get some data on that, so that we can, we're not just stumbling in the dark and kind of thinking, this is what we need, but maybe it's not what we need?
Yeah, demographic trends were covered in the Housing Needs Assessment. There's a wealth of data in that document that speaks to some of those demographic trends. But I also think particularly useful here, Councilmember, are the results of the statistically valid survey. We asked individuals about their plans to downsize in the future, or to stay in their existing home, or just generally how their housing needs might change, what their anticipated changes are in their lifestyle, or in their income, their ability to afford housing. So, you know, we had a wealth of data from the survey, I think, to complement then the demographic data and the Housing Needs Assessment.
Great. So I think when we're discussing this with Planning Commission, and then when it comes back to us, that that data is kind of front and center, so that it helps guide our discussions as well. And so we're talking about the kind of housing that we think we are going to need going forward with our current residents, so that we're, it's a bit more targeted and a bit more directional, as opposed to aspirational. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you. What use cases did you consider for this one? For Councilmember Napure, you said that you hadn't considered the sort of changing cultural demographics for maybe multi-generational. You said you hadn't considered that use case. So I was just curious, what use cases are in these changing demographics?
Well, I wasn't necessarily speaking to demographic changes as much as I was the Aging in Place program strategy specifically. When I had thought about the Aging in Place program specifically, and what that might look like for Simamish, I'd been thinking about it as, like, the example I gave in reading the text from the brochure was, you know, modifying homes to better facilitate in-home healthcare, which speaks to an aging population, which is a factor in Simamish, as well as across the region. But I was merely saying, I think we could look at that Aging in Place program, and you could imagine designing it to also facilitate, you know, multi-generational design for homes, whether existing or new homes. So simply sort of saying that the Aging in Place program could be construed more broadly than what it had been initially in my mind.
Okay. I would love to know what use cases you guys did consider for this, because I know this seems very much geared simply towards people getting older, which is certainly one of the trends we saw. I do have a question about the housing needs analysis and the trending data, because I don't recall seeing the future projections on the changing demographics, and maybe I just missed it. I know there was a lot of data about how things have changed over the last 20 years, but I don't think there were the projections of where do we see that going. And so some of the things I would love to see from staff, right, from your expertise and the data that we have from around the region, is, like, I know neighborhoods, and I don't know if cities overall do this, but you'll have a new neighborhood, and it'll tend to be a lot of younger families. And then as those families age, those houses will turn over. And then sometimes you'll get either a neighborhood where that doesn't happen, and they'll age, or you'll get a neighborhood where it starts to be mixed. So I'm wondering, what are the city trends? Right now, on the curve, we're aging, and we're losing our 25- to 45-year-olds. But do we anticipate there will be a new wave of younger families moving in? So we think in 10 or 20 years, we're going to see an uptick in that. Because, again, whatever we're designing now isn't for today, it's for 10 or 20 years from now. So was that projection of the demographic changes in there, or was it just the historical?
I would have to go and look at the document again to give you a precise answer. I think for the most part, it was historical data that was, we look at the trends, and we extrapolate the trends qualitatively. So I don't know that there's an exhibit in there. I don't believe, I don't recall that there's an exhibit in there that quantifies in, say, the year 2030 or 2040, the number of homes accommodating families of four individuals, for example. But that's a very difficult projection to make. So we sort of relied on trend line analysis to do a qualitative assessment of where we believe the demographics are heading.
Okay. I just want to make sure, again, we're looking at all the changes in demographics and not just, I mean, not that the seniors aren't important, and I think that is critical, because we have anecdotally that people don't tend to stay in Simamish, because there aren't a lot of options as you become an empty nester to stay in Simamish. So I think that is a really critical area, but I don't believe it's the only demographic change that we're experiencing. So I think it would be important to look at all of those. Because we do have an aging population in Simamish around the region, and I think in the country in general, why isn't senior housing on the left?
David, would you like to speak to, just represent staff thinking on why senior housing is sort of in the middle of the spectrum?
We tend to see more interest in senior housing, I wouldn't call it senior housing, but I would say that it's downsized housing through attached, more interest in attached housing, cottage housing-type programs or projects. Senior housing is more of a campus. That's more of a larger type facility that you would see. And we are, we are seeing an uptick in those in our town center. We do have two projects that we're talking about right now. But in order for us to try to facilitate that gap between the senior housing campus style and the typical single-family residence, we're looking at attached and cottage as being the most, the most probable to come to the surface to be built quickly. It takes, it takes more capital, it takes more negotiation to get an assemblage of land that can support a campus. And I don't mean campus in like a huge piece, but I mean more of like a piece of property that can operate as a senior housing, like an Aegis-type property.
Okay. And then, are you not including other tools that are identified in a different theme? So I could see, like, as I become an empty nester, and again, it's anecdotal, but multifamily, right? Like, moving out of, like, not having a yard at all, and having a place where somebody else takes care of all the maintenance, sounds really attractive. So is that just not on here, because it's included somewhere else?
Yeah, that one also sort of overlaps into the affordability side more, because you could start to get some scales of affordability with multifamily. A lot of these are, you know, have areas of overlap. If you did a, like, a thematic map of these, you'd see where they start to overlap in lots of areas.
That's cool. Thanks, okay.
Deputy Mayor Lamb?
Theme number two was, if my memory could be wrong, but I thought I saw tiny homes on the more appropriate, but I'm seeing small lot, single-family homes as less appropriate.
Yeah, so this, this one is, is...
Is, like, is there a definition? Is there, like, how do we distinguish between the two? They seem the same to me.
So appropriate scaled, single-family homes on small lots, if we were to redefine it that way. But small lot, single-family is something that, for years, we've heard from the community about, that they don't want large homes on small lots. Maybe that's changing, but I've spent the last seven years here listening to commentary in this room, and by and large, one of the predominant comments I've heard from people at the podium there is that they don't like the huge homes on tiny lots. So that was factored in here. Maybe there's a change occurring in the community. But if you were able to redefine that into appropriately scaled homes on small lots, you might have some traction. But that then could also fit kind of into the cottage housing realm, or into the ADUs. It's, there's a lot of overlap in these. We put that one over into the less appropriate category, because it doesn't also help with the affordability. A lot of times, it's the land economics that go into it, and it's the challenge around building on individual pieces of property, is the division then required, that's required that goes along with that, requires costly land improvements that are hard to recoup. So I don't think that's one that will ever go away. I think it will always be front and center, because we're largely single-family zoned here in the city. But it's, whether or not it's worth us digging into and spending a lot of time exploring it, it's already here. It's something we already have. There are other tools we feel that would be more effective in trying to reach our housing goals.
I actually just read the wording incorrectly. I assumed it was a small lot, small home. Thank you.
Councilmember Treen?
Yeah, David, I would, the small lot, single-family homes, don't spend time on that, because that's what we do. I'd almost take out the senior housing one as well, because that's coming forward anyway. And I would take a look then, if I was, if Scott were to be directing staff to do something on this, I would, I would say, taking the time to find out what is outside the city that provides these services as well. Because I believe right outside our city boundary, within blocks, are a lot of the senior housing and memory care. And so I would just say that, I mean, take a look, so that that data is available, if I were to direct Scott, if I was, you know, City Mayor. I think that would be something the Planning Commission would be interested in seeing, the numbers of what's outside. Because we are a regional player, right? And so as a city, we should be looking at what our neighbors are doing, and then allowing our residents, if they want to live five seconds outside the city limits, or one minute, or two minutes outside the city limits, to provide some of the changing demographics and residential housing needs, they're there already. Now, are they full completely? I don't know. So that would be the information that I think the Planning Commission would have some idea to whether senior housing is even necessary. I think Councilmember Howe was talking about, you know, maybe we don't know. So the last thing is, is I agree with Councilmember Napure with the, kind of the generational housing. I think that's something that's missing in any of the themes we've seen, unless it's going to be in four. And I know, Elliot, you were trying to put it into that Aging in Place program, and maybe that is where it goes. I just, I think it's something that we should address, because culturally, it's accepted, and it's something that I, I see that with my neighbors. I mean, it's already in the city, again. It's one of those things, I almost would say, we don't even need to have it on here, because it already exists in the city. We have multiple homes already that are in the city that are multi-generational. We just don't know who they are. We don't have that data. So I don't know how you want to address that, but I, so, I think it's great. So, hope my kids come and live and take care of me in the end. All right, later. Back to you, Mayor.
Great. I don't see any of your hands, and these look good to me. So thank you.
Okay. Onto the final theme of the night. Theme four is maintaining Simamish's sense of place. Some of these do contribute explicitly housing units, or do explicitly decrease the cost, but many of these don't. So in some ways, that's a departure from the prior themes. In many cases, these will work in tandem with other strategies to make sure that the outcomes for the community are as intended and aligned with the community vision. But nonetheless, on the more appropriate end of the spectrum, we had partnerships, for instance, with, you know, affordable housing providers, or with Arch, some of which you already do. You might just look at ways to get more out of those relationships, infrastructure capacity analysis, to ensure that you're building in places that can support that development, sensitive design guidelines. We already had a discussion about design guidelines, this one is really similar, sub-area planning, growth phasing, and criteria for added density. At the other end of the spectrum, an investment property database, and then a few here in the middle worthy of some additional consideration.
Councilmember Howe?
I mean, to a certain extent, I think the way to look at this particular slide is kind of a status, like, almost, where are we at today, to some extent, to under, just any, where are we? What do we actually have? Because, for example, I do believe that having a surplus land inventory would be a really important thing to have, because I do think the only way we're going to get any other little pockets of, say, affordable housing is going to be if we gift the land, or make an investment to give the land to a developer. So I am a big proponent of stuff like that, but we got to know what we, what's even possible. And then we have to figure out from there, okay, then we have to zone it differently in order to even make that work. So that's the work-back plan, to understand how long it's going to take us to get to where we want to be. Just understanding that timeline is really helpful, and I think that this slide kind of goes to that. So I support where this, where this is going. And I love seeing the Tree Canopy program also as part of it, as just, again, understanding just, what does our map look like? Where are we today, and where are we trying to head off to, and by when?
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, you know, given that we have the Tree Canopy program on here, which is great, I think I'm even more dumbfounded why we don't have an element for transit and/or transportation, right? I think transit is critical to almost every one of these, right? Affordability, again, owning a car is the second highest expense, second only to your housing. So if we want to make things more affordable, not requiring someone to own a car makes it a lot more affordable. For people who are aging, having transportation options other than driving is not just a good idea, it's a safety issue and an affordability issue. So I think having transit as part of this is missing. I was also just trying to quickly map this, since we don't have these slides in advance, and I don't know if this was an oversight or on purpose, but the urban growth areas is in the theme four on the page, but I don't see it on here.
I, to be frank, I do not recall why. We had some conversations as a project team about a few of the strategies that we discussed in December, that we thought at that time were no longer appropriate to bring forward, and maybe the urban growth areas was one of those. David, I'm not sure if your recollection is any different than mine on that front.
Yeah, that was one that after internal discussion, we identified, you know, there's denestation areas, but the, to blow out the urban growth area, that is a major undertaking. And most conversations I hear in the regional and state level are, you know, we're not moving the growth boundary. So I didn't know how that one fit in here exactly.
Is that what it means? Because when I looked at the definition, I read it as designating a place within the city as an urban growth area, and then being able to find a way to not then build around it. So did I just misunderstand how it was defined here?
I'm looking at the language from the brochure that I referenced earlier, and it says, "A UGA may be an appropriate mechanism for the city of Simamish to target areas suitable for growth while maintaining the existing development character elsewhere. In particular, a UGA in Simamish can be planned around current public transportation access and encourage more transit-oriented development." I do think that is a little bit confusing. Absolutely of the same mind as David, that UGA expansion is largely a non-starter, and maybe we should just be using a different term than UGA if we intend for that to be in Simamish. And if that is the case, if the latter is the case, and that's something that we want to consider, then I would suggest that we might consider that under things like the density bonuses, or a couple, like, the, what was the language that we used in theme one? Let me page that.
Targeted increase of density.
Right, targeted area... Right, targeted area to increase density.
And that's
That fits nicely with subarea plans, which is on this slide. So there is some overlap there that I think covers that intent.
Great. Yeah, it's fine. Great.
Councilmember Indupure?
Thank you, Mayor. So when I see the theme as maintaining Samamish's sense of place, it really says we want to keep things just the way they are right now. Is that a correct assumption?
Well, we certainly don't want to keep the housing stock the way it is in terms of the number of units you have, at the price levels that they are at, and with the lack of diversity in housing types. I think we're all on the same page that we desire some changes on that front, and indeed that Samamish is going to be required to accommodate some changes on that front. We just heard loud and clear from the community that there are concerns about the character of growth. And so in thinking about how we grow, we need to make sure that we're growing well. And that's the spirit of theme four.
Okay, good to know. So I think, at least in that, the questions that were asked, you know, it says, "Maintaining a sense of place is crucial to fulfill Samamish's housing goals while preserving what makes the community special." I think I have a question around, you know, I think we referenced a little bit earlier around older homes, for example. And some of them, we might want, or people might want to maintain, but some, you know, it could be, you know, up for redevelopment, for example. Where does that fit in? Does that fit into this theme? Or does that go somewhere? Does that fall under the sensitive design guidelines or somewhere else? How do we accommodate for that? Because I think when I drive through, like Kirkland or, you know, even Bellevue, all those homes that were built in the 70s or 80s are now being torn down. And it's the same square footage, but there are newer designs coming up for homes. And I know this is not, you know, they're probably not affordable at all. But still, I'm very curious on where that falls in, in these four themes.
That's a great question. I think it's sprinkled throughout each of the themes. At least that's my initial reaction. When I think about what happens when a home is redeveloped, if none of the development regulations have changed in the intervening year since it was built, then the owner of the property is allowed by right to build the same structure with, you know, modern construction methods and materials. But there are a number of strategies that we've suggested across these themes that would change that. The accessory dwelling units in tiny homes, maybe the missing middle zoning, certainly. I think, you know, when it comes to demolition, if you had the Housing Repair and Preservation Program, that might preclude some demolition, not take away the right to do so, right, but make it not, make it unnecessary to do so. Some of the, you know, contract rezoning and concomitant agreements might come into effect there. If you were looking to do this on an ad hoc or case-by-case basis, or you had specific parcels that were at critical areas within the city, or large parcels that you wanted to plan specially for. So it seems to me that in the event of redevelopment of an individual property, any number of these strategies could come into play.
I think the biggest one of all those for me is the minimum density. That if you were to apply a minimum density to a historic neighborhood, meaning it had been built a number of, you know, years ago under a different land use setup, and you wanted to see upon redevelopment that that be replaced with a duplex, you could do that through a minimum density type requirement.
Great, thank you. And then for the community land trusts and co-ops, is that where we would work with other sort of, like a Fortera or something like that? And how does that relate to, like, TDRs as well? Is there a correlation?
I imagine there can be, although I'm not familiar with any in Washington State that have taken advantage of any TDR or TDR-like programs. Generally, the community land trust is just a model where a nonprofit will own the land outright, and then individuals or families are able to buy homes on that land, but they are leasing the land the home itself sits on. And in exchange for that lower price, because they're not paying for the land explicitly, they agree to, you know, sell the home at an affordable price that allows them to make some gains under appreciation, or at least have built equity in the home without the cost of the home escalating for the next owner. So I imagine there could be some interplay designed there with TDR, but I'm just not familiar with an example.
Thank you. Councilmember Trean?
Yeah, so I'd look at investment property database, just move it to the side down the road. Community land trusts like the idea, like the concept. Don't see it happening in the next 10 to 20 years. So let's not waste our time there. Contingency planning, surplus land inventory, oh, yeah. They can look at it, but sure, look at those. The Tree Canopy program is why I moved here. That's why I live in Samamish. So make it stronger, or at least put the, put the teeth behind it so we can actually make it work and implement it. So, yeah, I think the Planning Commission should definitely look at that. And, I mean, clearly, I don't, when I, when I think about habitat, which is another reason why I moved here to Samamish, and I look at our lakes and streams, which is some of the most beautiful parts of it, the fact that we're not, we should be protecting that as our wildlife corridors. So I don't see that on here. But one of the senses of my place, or a lot of people's place in Samamish, is the wildlife that live here. And seeing those pictures of bobcats is always amazing to me. So, so that one I would move over to more important. I like the top three you got in blue, would be fine. David Pyle, on subarea plans, I take it this is, can you explain what you mean by subarea plans when it comes to the comp plan update and, you know, this housing element?
So, a subarea, the subarea plans could either be policy direction that the city take on subarea planning over the next horizon, and there'd be a time, time window associated with it. Or if we had the capacity and we were able to pull off a subarea plan, we would integrate it into the comprehensive plan. That is a fairly large undertaking. But not, not totally off the table. I think that there are some existing locations in the city with existing development patterns where you could do some, some pretty straightforward subarea planning and get quite a bit of bank density in those areas and make it forward compatible with transit. But if you're looking at
Like John Eastman?
James, yeah. Well, that's an area that hasn't been developed.
You're talking about subarea plans for places that have already been developed.
Existing impervious, existing development pattern, and how you could look at redevelopment that might occur in those locations along existing arterial corridors, where you might see future increases in transit services and frequency.
Cool. That was my understanding of it. And I think that we should definitely be looking at that for future planning in the city, that we have already areas that are covered with concrete, and they could be better utilized and are already on 228th. We are in the urban growth area, and so things are going to be built here. The challenge that I'm having as a council member and representing the public is that I'm fully aware that as growth is taking place in certain of these subarea plans, that it does not exclude the fact that growth will be taking place outside of these subareas or in the town center and other areas like that. And so when we go to planning for this, I, again, am going to just come back to, at some point, this city needs to have a plan that says, here's what our growth is at its max. This is max buildout of this city. And because of infrastructure, the capabilities of it, this is all the larger we're going to be. And until we do that, to me, some of this is kind of just, hey, good job. Thanks. Excellent exercise. But since we're sitting here looking at big picture items, big themes, when I look at maintaining Samamish's sense of place in the region, then we need to know, as a council, what does buildout look like? And then is that, how do we get there? And can we get there? And so that, the biggest one I look at right now, as I've done three years of it, is I'm looking at stormwater. I'm looking at sewer capacity, you know? And then how do I still get, because I was asked to govern, how do I protect people's life, which is clean air and clean water and safe food? So if I'm not doing those things, then I'm misleading, I'm misleading the public. And I refuse to do that. So maintaining Samamish's sense of place, the Tree Canopy is actually one of the number one things it does, because it cleans the air, it holds the water, it cleans the water. So it returns it to the water cycle. So, so I know, I'm sorry, I'll step off my soapbox and just let you know that I'm fully aware that, you know, some of the things that should be going on or will happen in the next 10, 20 years with this comprehensive plan update are going to be conflicting with each other. And I'm okay with that, as long as we take the priority that clean air and clean water and safe food and the safety of the people who live here is still one of the top priorities of this council. Thank you. Mayor, back to you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you. I think Councilmember Trean kind of maybe made a case for TDRs being really critical, right? Because I think that's how we help achieve what he was talking about. So I think that's a great call out. The other thing that I don't feel like, I'm assuming because this is all four of the themes, one of the things that I don't feel like we accounted for, and maybe it kind of fits in the changing demographics, is how are we planning on housing for, I mean, just be blunt, the people we produce here, right? So we're a very family-oriented community, right? So how are we dealing with the internal growth? So maybe my kid isn't going to live here, but if all of our homes have, you know, two kids, you know, presumably, they're not going to live together for the entirety of their lives. So we are creating more housing needs in the community. So is that something that we factor in somewhere? Because that feels like an internal need that we're not addressing.
I do think so. I mean, we've spoken a little bit about, you know, when the kids move out downsizing. And then we've also spoken a little bit about different family structures and how those can evolve over time with the multi-generational design. I think, too, we've talked a lot, talked a lot about multifamily housing. And typically, if you've got a student that leaves for college and wants to come back and live in Samamish again, and they're not looking to live with mom and dad, which may, of course, still be an option, then multifamily housing is typically the first place they turn, particularly with, you know, the cost of housing in Samamish. So that's one where, you know, maybe it was under theme one, but I think it benefits themes two and themes three just as much.
I completely agree. Thanks for that. What I don't think we've accounted for, though, is, is sort of that number. Because if you think about it, right, my house, right, we have one house, there are four of us. In a couple of years, we're going to need three houses, housing units, right, not one. Because those two kids are going to want to go live on their own. And as much as I love them, I'm going to want them to go live on their own. So where, where is that sort of trajectory accounted for? Because if, even if they don't live here, they got to live somewhere. So are we saying that we're going to, like, create people and then ship them to someone else and make them somebody else's problem?
So that's part of the conversation next week. And what we're looking at there is how do we plan for and bank for additional density in the future? You know, where do we want to start to make investments in changing land use systems that we have, making sure we have adequate infrastructure, making sure we're doing contingency planning, all the things that are up here. And I think that one of the things we want to look at is, you know, where do we have the ability to add capacity and bank some capacity where there is going to be minimum impact in terms of the existing land use pattern that we have? And in terms of least amount of impact on infrastructure and on stormwater and impervious?
Absolutely.
And the door is open to further conversation about, you know, looking outside of that existing pattern. But that's a much harder conversation. And I suspect over time, Samamish will have to have that conversation. However, the one that we're looking at right now is really focused on the existing land use pattern that, that, you know, you'll see in the packet for the 17th. We've included all the zoning maps going back to like 1986. So you could see how it's changed or not changed over time. And I think it's very revealing that we really haven't changed our land use banking to understand where the density could go.
Okay. I just, it just felt like a theme in a way that was almost missing, right? Well, we talked about meeting the regional needs. We talked about changing demographics. And again, maybe that's kind of where it fits. But we didn't really talk about those internal needs, right? Like the needs of the people who live here. How do we make sure we meet their needs? And again, Councilmember Trean, I think you brought up a really great point around, you know, part of what we need to be focused on is how do we protect the environment? So again, I kind of feel like all of this needs to be, and you're probably working towards that, but all of this needs to be bumped up against that Climate Action Plan. And whatever decisions that we make, it may up certain priorities and reduce others because we could say, this might be somewhat effective at creating affordable housing, but it's like really terrible at, you know, dealing with the environment. I think of ADUs, right? You know, where we have land that is big enough to build, like lots that are big enough to build ADUs is probably the least place where we're going to have transit, right? So by encouraging ADUs, are we potentially partially solving one problem, but exacerbating another one? So I'd love to see where some of those things intersect as we pick what to move forward on. Thanks.
I just wanted to note, our internal teams for the Climate Action Plan and the Housing Action Plan and the Comp Plan are meeting regularly and coordinating. We have our consultants coordinating as well. But one of the things that we've talked about, because the timing for a lot of this work is overlapping, as you stated, was when we have the Comp Plan further developed, we have the Climate Action Plan finalized, we have our Housing Action Plan finalized, doing a review and doing an addendum to things where things need to be adjusted, right? We'll have our housing targets for affordability by then, too. And so there may be adjustments that are needed after the HAP has to be adopted in order to make it fit the current situation that we have, once we develop the comprehensive plan and the other planning tools.
I don't see any other hands. My only question was on the contingency planning. I just assumed that you guys are doing that all the time. I didn't know if it needed, like, a specific call out, but.
I think we added it there
Yeah.
To call it out so that people saw that that was included and to make sure that it, you know, yeah, public awareness.
No, that's great. Because I was like, oh, I don't know if I've noticed that, like, in the Comp Plan. But yeah, that sounds good. So I do not see any other hands. And I don't know if you have anything else, Elliot?
We're just going to close on a brief sort of what's coming up next, or at least a few key dates to keep in mind. And that was it. As I said, we'll be meeting with the Planning Commission next week on the 19th. We intend to be back with the Planning Commission with a draft of the Housing Action Plan on March 2nd, a public hearing with the Planning Commission then on the Housing Action Plan on April 6th, and then a review with you all on May 9th, and a public hearing on June 6th. So at least in terms of our touches with Planning Commission and council, that's what we've identified moving forward. I don't have anything further beyond that. Happy to take additional questions, but if there are none, thank you so much for the good energy on this. I've taken a lot of notes, and we look forward to getting back together as a project team to keep moving forward.
Great. Thank you, Elliot. I don't see any other questions.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, how long do we need to extend?
If it was, my guess would be an hour. You could do 45 minutes, maybe 30 minutes, start there.
Who's going to do it?
I move, we extend to 10.
I move, we extend to 10:30.
Second. All those in favor to extend till 10:30, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right, let's do it. So next up is Greenhouse Gas Emissions and Vehicle Miles Travel Reduction Strategy, Climate Change and Resilience Comprehensive Plan Element and the Climate Action Plan Project Kickoff.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. So while our team members are promoted to panelists, I'll go ahead and introduce the topic. We, tonight, we have Evan Fisher, who's the project manager on this, and also our Comprehensive Plan Project Manager, with Alexis Whitaker and Erin Hawking from Brightworks. They're being promoted right now. And they'll be providing a presentation on the status of the greenhouse gas and vehicle miles traveled baseline work and as well as the status and schedule for our development of a climate action plan. I do see Alexis and Erin have joined us. Welcome. Good evening. And I'll turn it over to either Alexis or Erin to start the presentation.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. And hello, everybody. We really appreciate the opportunity to talk to you all today. There are three of us here from Brightworks, myself, Erin and Chris. As part of our presentation, we do have introductions. So I think we're going to go ahead and get started with our slide deck. Wonderful. So as I mentioned, we are from, oh, excuse me. Let me start with our agenda. We'll have introductions in just a moment here. We're going to spend a little bit of time going over our scope, making sure all of that is crystal clear before talking about alignment, the partners who we've looked to and the outside organizations whose guidance we're relying on as we put together the Greenhouse Gas VMT Reduction Strategy and the Climate Action Plan. We'll talk a bit about baselining and the process that we've undertaken so far to complete that. And from there, we'll go over the actual data that we've collected, what's available so far, before discussing timeline and next steps. We have some time held for Q and A at the end. We do ask that you hold your questions until the end of the presentation as we hope to answer some of them as we go through here. Wonderful. So let me first introduce Brightworks Sustainability. Founded in 2001, we are a national leading service provider to organizations, public and private, with services in planning, implementing and reporting towards more sustainable outcomes. During this conversation today, we're going to be focusing on greenhouse gas reduction and climate action plan development. But what really makes Brightworks unique is that we are attuned to holistic environmental stewardship and social justice outcomes through these integrated planning efforts. So our team for today, Chris, why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself first?
Hi, yeah, Chris Forney, Brightworks Sustainability. I've been leading planning and decarbonization scopes for over a decade. But Alexis and Erin are our subject matter experts for this VMT greenhouse gas emissions reduction scope and climate action plan. So yeah, I'll hand it to Alexis and Erin to introduce themselves and lead the presentation.
Wonderful. So as Chris mentioned, I'm Alexis. I am the day-to-day point of contact for this project at Brightworks Sustainability. I'm in the Sustainable Organizations Practice of Brightworks along with Erin.
Yeah, thanks Alexis. Hi, everyone. My name's Erin Hawking. I'm also a consultant with Brightworks Sustainability at our Sustainable Organizations Practice, specialized in greenhouse gas inventories and accounting as well as carbon reduction strategies and implementation.
At the beginning of our time here, we wanted to quickly name some of our relevant experience. We worked on the greenhouse gas vehicle miles traveled reduction analysis for the Hanford site in Richland, Washington. Like Samamish, most of their Scope 3 emissions come from vehicular travel, specifically commuter travel. And here we study the greenhouse gas reduction impacts of various county alternatives and work with agency staff to determine the feasibility and adaptability of greenhouse gas reduction measures to meet Department of Energy targets. We've also worked with the Metro Regional Government Sustainability Impact Assessment for Portland, Oregon, where we baseline regional impacts, including transportation, energy, water and waste, to provide context and goal setting for their sustainability action plan. In Beaverton, we prepared reporting of the city's sustainability initiatives according to the Global Reporting Initiative Protocols, or GRI Protocols, establishing a rigorous and durable platform for ongoing tracking and managing of inter-agency environmental and social governance goals, which the city continues to use. And finally, the last project we have listed here, the City of Tigard Sustainability Action Plan, where we carried out stakeholder engagement to identify and prioritize citywide sustainability strategies that supported documentation of their first draft Sustainability Action Plan and gave city staff the foundation needed to build ongoing inter-agency sustainability initiatives. Not listed here is my own experience in climate action planning for the San Mateo County Community College District, where I spearheaded their climate action plan as well as a few years of experience spread around our team, several years of experience spread around our team doing greenhouse gas analysis for a variety of municipalities. I want to talk about our goals for today. We want to provide you with an orientation to the climate action planning process for future input and ensure that you understand the process and next steps. As we go through the presentation today, we do ask that you kindly hold your questions until the end. But as you think about those questions, we're particularly interested in feedback around our baseline and different data sources used, the project schedule, and how the city can integrate climate action planning into the council's schedule. Beginning with our scope of work, we want to talk about why we are starting this work. In Samamish, there's certainly interest from the community to undertake this work, to undertake climate action. But in addition to community interest, state law requires that the city start work around emissions reporting. House Bill 1241 includes five-year reporting due in 2029 on greenhouse gases and vehicle miles traveled. RCW 3670A requires cities to measure greenhouse gas emissions and VMT and establish a reporting call for strategies to reduce greenhouse gases and vehicle miles traveled. So we like to think of our scope as nested with each item expanding on the work of the previous stage. The core of our work comes from Climate Program Early Planning Grant from the Washington State Department of Commerce. This includes the development of a baseline that includes transportation and residential emissions. We are generating greenhouse gas and VMT reduction measures in the short term. And this is currently where we're turning our attention next. This baselining is what we've been working on so far. From there, we're going to build on that foundation to integrate the data and measures from the greenhouse gas vehicle miles traveled grants into the broader comprehensive plan update. These two processes are going to be happening through the winter and the spring. And finally, all of that work is going to roll up into the climate action plan, which will include all emissions within city boundaries as defined by the greenhouse gas protocols geographic plus boundary. And we're going to get into a little bit more detail about what that boundary means exactly. But for now, it's important to know that this type of inventory is the same that King County and neighboring cities have conducted. Because the climate action plan is the largest of these three products, we're going to spend a fair amount of time just today discussing our plans for the climate action plan itself. If you're curious what this process is going to look like, this graphic helps break down a work into three main phases. We're currently wrapping up our baseline analysis phase where we calculated the city's greenhouse gas baseline in line with regional emissions frameworks and goals. This was done mostly with a focus on the comprehensive plan update and the greenhouse gas VMT reduction strategy. So for categories that are more relevant for the climate action plan, there's still some data forthcoming around that. We're moving next toward our measure development phase, where we're going to be identifying measures that reduce greenhouse gas emissions from vehicle miles traveled and conduct stakeholder engagement as we develop that list of actions and measures. And then through the late summer into the fall, we're going to be developing the climate action planning report itself and moving into adoption by the end of the year. The proposed work of developing the greenhouse gas emissions and VMT reduction strategy is going to be the city's first dedicated planning effort to setting actionable climate change goals and policies within the 2024 comprehensive plan. So the strategy is going to analyze emissions from VMT and create measures to reduce those emissions in a way that's aligned with K4C targets. Together with the Climate Change and Resiliency element, this strategy is going to help the city respond to regional and state climate change priorities as well as the priorities of the community and city council. The Comprehensive Plan Update. As we know, the City of Samamish has had some changes since the last major comprehensive plan update. In that 2015 comprehensive plan, Goal UC7 acknowledges the need to address climate change by supporting regional efforts and mitigating and adapting to climate change and establishes seven supporting policies. So this increased awareness has created a desire among many Samamish community members to act. And feedback gathered during the city's community visioning project asked residents and stakeholders about their vision for the future of the city. Respondents emphasized the importance of maintaining and growing Samamish's environmental features and addressing climate change and its impacts. Which brings us to the Climate Action Plan. So a climate action plan more broadly is a strategic framework for measuring, planning and reducing greenhouse gas emissions. Cities use climate action plans as customized roadmaps for making informed decisions about how to achieve the largest and most cost-effective emissions reductions while staying in line with other municipal goals. At a minimum, a climate action plan is going to include an inventory of existing emissions, production goals or targets, as well as analyze and prioritize actions to meet those reduction goals. Ideally, a climate action plan will also include an implementation strategy that identifies required resources and funding mechanisms. CAPS also will sometimes include additional components such as resilient strategies, clean energy targets, or economic and social goals. We want to present a few examples. So over the next three slides, we have snapshots of other climate action plans to give you a sense where all of this analysis is headed, right? We've kind of been in a space of theory. So what does this look like in practice? Here we have an example from the City of Kenmore, where you can see the impact of climate action planning measures. So Kenmore is setting targets in line with K4C, which are going to be used to track the city's progress over time. The figure illustrates the emissions path that Kenmore is currently on. That's that black line on the top. And the anticipated emissions reductions from federal and state policies represented by some of the gray kind of triangular wedges. And then the gap that remains in meeting the reduction targets that need to be addressed by CAP measures. And that's the section in teal down there below. This is an example from the City of Bellevue. Once cities understand their emissions and what they need to do to achieve their goals, they'll typically identify focus areas that are used to organize greenhouse gas mitigation and reduction strategies. So this example from the City of Bellevue, they have chosen five categories. Cities take different approaches to the number of type of categories included, but this is a pretty representative sample of where many CAPs choose to focus. Finally, within those categories, cities will identify goals, strategies and actions that will help them achieve their desired reductions in each focus area. This example from the City of Issaquah provides a high-level overview of actions from a few of their categories. They have more than three, but this is all that would fit on this slide. You can see here that they have, there are targets and metrics, strategies and key actions. And later on in the climate action plan, they expound on these in more detail. From here, we want to focus on the existing work that's been done in the region and how the City of Samamish align with the work that is complete and underway by partners. Puget Sound Regional, oh, well, first, we have this sort of upside-down cake meant to sort of help convey the structure in which the City of Samamish is operating as it puts together a climate action plan. We see Puget Sound Regional Council at the top here. In their Vision 2050, they set the stage for updates to countywide planning policies and local comprehensive plans done by cities. They've also provided some excellent emissions forecasting in collaboration with King County. King County, meanwhile, has a Strategic Climate Action Plan Update that serves as a blueprint for county climate action. This document, in tandem with their Climate Action Toolkit for Cities, greatly informs our data analysis and baselining effort, providing data sources and procedures that are in line with the rest of the county. We have K4C below, the King County City's Climate Collaboration, which establishes carbon reduction goals. And finally, we get to the City of Samamish, which established its own goals in the 2011 Sustainability Strategy. All of this previous work allows us to stand on the shoulders of giants and gives a clear direction of the analysis and data that's appropriate for the City of Samamish's climate action plan. Digging a little more into the details here, we can see that King County has a lot of resources available to help neighboring jurisdictions align with their methodologies. We already mentioned the Climate Action Toolkit. They also have a detailed greenhouse gas inventory that was published in 2015 and updated in 2017. Puget Sound Regional Council is also a wealth of information with comprehensive plan resources and regional emissions analysis. They have their passport to 2024, or excuse me, 2044 climate in addition to the other documents that we've already mentioned. Finally, we have K4C, which has policies and other guidance that reflects the commitments of K4C and countywide carbon emissions goals. So this countywide goal is a 50% reduction by 2030 and 80% by 2050 compared to a 2007 baseline, which is going to be really key for the City of Samamish in establishing climate action planning goals. And finally, we have the City of Samamish's 2011 Sustainability Strategy with five goals related to climate and the environment. These are a really excellent start. And we think that the climate action plan is going to build on the work that's already been done in this region. So what does all of this mean for Samamish? We've done a lot of table setting, a lot of contextualizing. The city should aim to align with K4C and achieve greenhouse gas emissions reductions at 50% by 2030 and 95% by 2050. The city also has policy commitments to incorporate and adopt policies that support reduction goals. With this goal in sight, how does the City of Samamish go about beginning to accomplish this goal? We're going to follow established processes for climate action planning to do this. This is a brief overview of the climate action planning process. Our team is currently at the beginning stages, as we mentioned earlier, with our phases diagram. The baselining and aligning to target phase is where we are currently sitting, having drafted that baseline inventory and identified targets. Our next phase is going to be starting over the next few months. And that will be to forecast emissions and reductions to help identify what kind of greenhouse gas emissions reductions are needed in the climate action plan. From there, we'll move into developing strategies and actions. This is the part of the process that is going to involve a lot of stakeholder engagement and a lot of community workshops as we work to develop those measures and actions. Finally, we will develop the document itself along with an implementation and monitoring guidance that's going to help move us from goal to reality. Now that we have fully set the stage, Erin's going to speak about the work that's already been completed, including the baseline inventory and the data we have so far.
Great. Thank you, Alexis. So as Alexis mentioned, just want to provide you all with a bit more context into some of the considerations and criteria that went into our baselining effort. So thinking about existing conditions and, and resources, as Alexis mentioned, one primary technical guidance we use is the Greenhouse Gas Protocol. This is the technical guidance on greenhouse gas accounting for communities and cities, specifically the reference that was used by King County for the way that they drew their boundaries and conducted their greenhouse gas inventory. For this study within the City of Samamish, we're utilizing a geographic plus inventory boundary. This means looking at all activities within the geographic boundary of King County, or in this case, the City of Samamish, including transportation, buildings, industrial processes, waste, water use and agriculture. And that plus on geographic plus refers to the inclusion of use of electricity purchased from the grid, or in this case, from Puget Sound Energy. So the first step we took in establishing a baseline was a materiality assessment. So this was taking a closer look at all of those categories that I listed out as occurring within the geographic boundary of the City of Samamish and determining those areas that would have a relevant or significant contribution to the greenhouse gas footprint of the city. and determining those areas that would have a relevant or significant contribution to the greenhouse gas footprint of the city. So in the left-hand column, you can see the category defined within the geographic boundary, and whether or not we determined that this emission source was material or not. And this process included ongoing engagement with city employees and the other stakeholders that I will outline in a few slides, as well as conducting our independent research into the city of Samamish to understand the footprint and makeup of what is material. So we went through agriculture, forestry, and other land use, inboundery, waste and wastewater, industrial processes, and product use. Those are the categories that we determined to be not material. As Samamish is a largely residential community, the majority of the emissions and the material emissions that we're looking at are inboundery transportation generated primarily through single occupancy vehicles or cars, commuter cars, stationary fuel combustion, and grid-supplied electricity as our material emission sources. Another way to look at this information, a graphic representation, this is taken from that greenhouse gas protocol and demonstrating what that geographic boundary was. That will be all of the categories within the teal box on the left-hand side. You can see we've indicated the red X for the categories that were not found to be material. And the rest, the fuel combustion, inboundery transportation, and grid-supplied energy are material to Samamish. You can see the outer gray box that is grayed out in this visual. That's a different approach to looking at greenhouse gas emissions. That would be an inventory boundary. The reason that we have chosen to focus on the, what is outlined as the Scope 1 and 2 emissions in the geographic boundary is due to guidance from King County and ensuring that the way that we are looking at our footprint is complementary to K4C and the initiatives that have been done in the county at large. So once again, material emission sources that we will get into in a bit more detail in the following slides are transportation, building and industry electricity, and building and industry natural gas and oil. So with that overview of the baselining process, I'll give a bit more details into the data collected and how that was translated into our calculations and emissions baselining footprint. So the stakeholders engaged to date, these are groups that we met with to understand, gain a better understanding of the city's footprint operations and those areas that may be contributing to emission sources, as well as understanding where the data would come from to understand these emission sources. So we met with Puget Sound Regional Council, Transportation and VMT Engineers, Puget Sound Energy, King County Greenhouse Gas Emissions Report Group, K4C, City of Samamish Public Works, as well as the two water and sewage districts within the city boundary. So conducting the inventory, again, looking at the data associated with each of these emission sources and understanding not only what that data is, but the key stakeholders for how we would receive that data. For transportation, we utilized daily and annual vehicle miles traveled to estimate and calculate emissions. This was done in a partnership with the VMT engineers that have the working relationship with the Samamish Public Works Department, as well as collaboration with Puget Sound Regional Council and King County to understand existing efforts and, again, validate that our efforts were in conjunction and complimentary to what was being done at the county level. And then for building and industry electricity, as well as natural gas and oil, we looked at, for electricity, the kilowatt-hour consumption of electricity within buildings, primarily being single-family residents within the city of Samamish. And then for building and industry, natural gas and oil, we looked primarily at gas usage. And for both of these instances, we spoke to Puget Sound Energy. And just a quick note on the Puget Sound Energy data for both electricity and gas, we are waiting on the final numbers to verify from Puget Sound Energy. But as Alexis mentioned earlier, King County has published many resources, and so we were able to utilize data that King County had included specifically for the city of Samamish that they had received from Puget Sound Energy as a representative sample of the electricity and gas usage for the city as interim data for our baseline. So the next few slides will dive a bit deeper into transportation, specifically what that data looked like, the process looked like, any assumptions, and then what the overall carbon emissions associated with transportation are. So once again, the activity data, daily vehicle miles traveled within the city of Samamish. Previous data sets referenced were the Puget Sound Regional Data and King County Emissions Inventory. And we spoke with the Samamish Public Works Traffic Engineers, King County, and the Puget Sound Regional Council. So an overview of the VMT calculations performed. These calculations were performed by the group Transportation Solutions. One that has, this group has worked with the city of Samamish on EIA reports previously and was able to perform this work. And just to give a overview of some of the assumptions used, to calculate our baseline emissions, the annual emissions were based on peak PM vehicle counts that were taken within the city of Samamish. The counts were split into town center and non-town center emissions. This was classified by the zoning designations of what is categorized as town-centered. So just to clarify, it is not the entire commercial core of the city of Samamish as defined by the town center. And the emissions analysis utilized a no-action alternative for the baseline. That did not include changes in commuting patterns due to working from home since the COVID-19 pandemic. A few more assumptions, as you can see by this pie chart, the vast majority of emissions are coming from passenger vehicles, with a smaller footprint, closer to 1.5% coming from heavy vehicles, trucks, and the like, with a very small portion of transportation from pedestrian and bicycle usage. And these are based on fall 2022 traffic counts. So overview of the greenhouse gas emissions resulting from vehicle miles traveled within the city of Samamish. The pie chart on the left-hand side, you can see that will make up our total annual footprint with a 64,000 showing the metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent associated with transportation and vehicle miles traveled. So the on-road transportation emissions, once again, you see the town center and non-town center. This is based on the locations that the Transportation Solution engineers conducted their assessment with one traffic count location within the town center jurisdiction and one in the non-town center. The graph on the bottom right-hand side, we're seeing here the greenhouse gas emissions during peak weekday PM travel. You can see this number going slightly up over time from the 2016 baseline measured, gradually increasing through 2028 and 2035. So highlighting the transportation emissions, no action taken versus alignment with the K4C goals. If you recall a few slides ago, Alexis showed the wedge tool from the city of Kenmore, which had the middle section of the wedge filled in with different initiatives, both at the state and regional level, as well as within the city, that would reduce the emissions to be in alignment with their goals. And that's essentially what we would like to demonstrate here. The darker line at the top is showing business as usual, no action taken, emissions continuing to increase over time. While the lighter green line is demonstrating where emissions will need to be to fall within the reduction goals of King County and the K4C. So our engagement over the next few months, as Alexis noted, will be identifying strategies that can fill this gap and complement state and regional initiatives that will be lowering emissions due to vehicle miles traveled. So transitioning into the built environment emissions, specifically electricity. Just another overview, the activity data looked at here was kilowatt-hour consumption from Puget Sound Energy. We referenced past Puget Sound Energy databases and resources, excuse me, data sets as they had worked with King County and other cities within K4C to establish baselines, and they were quite familiar with the process. And again, engaged Puget Sound Energy and King County representatives to understand the process and data availability for this emission source. And then overview of natural gas and oil, again, looking at these together as Puget Sound Energy supplies both the electricity and natural gas for the city of Samamish. For natural gas, we are looking at natural gas consumption from Puget Sound Energy. And oil use will be looking to the U.S. Energy Information Administration for any emissions associated with oil within the city. So primarily Puget Sound Energy and the King County districts, the King County and K4C as reference of stakeholders for these emissions sources. Before we dive into the emissions associated with the electricity generator, excuse me, used within the city of Samamish, we did want to illustrate the energy source mix for both Puget Sound Energy compared to Seattle City Light. This is the makeup of the typical electricity generated and delivered to the city of Samamish. So you can see in the graphic on the left-hand side, with Puget Sound Energy, there is a diverse mix of sources that make up the electricity supplied that includes both renewable and non-renewable sources, such as natural gas and coal. And then the visual on the right-hand side shows the power makeup of Seattle City Light, a nearby power provider that has a much cleaner or more renewable grid with the vast majority of power coming from hydropower. And this is just something to keep in mind, it's not something directly within the control of the city of Samamish at this time. But it's something we take into consideration when looking to reduction strategies and mapping out how we anticipate emissions to change or stay the same over time. We consider not only the current fuel mix, but how that fuel mix is anticipated to change over time based on either commitments from Puget Sound Energy, Washington State regulations, or other factors that may influence this mix. So jumping into the electricity emissions, again, from the electricity supplied from Puget Sound Energy, you can see the pie chart on the left-hand side shows the, a small majority of the emissions coming from electricity. So just over 157,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent annually for our 2019 baseline. The graphic on the right-hand side on the top, we have a breakdown of electricity emissions by building type. So the majority of emissions coming from residential buildings, with a smaller portion being made up of commercial, which is something we anticipated seeing after understanding the makeup of the city of Samamish with a large majority of single-family homes. And the graphic on the right-hand side bottom just shows the electricity usage in kilowatt-hours. So again, this is the fuel source that is translating into the emissions with a similar distribution of majority residential usage with a smaller amount made up from the commercial buildings.
Excuse me, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to extend to 11. We only have three minutes left, so.
Yeah, I know, I was waiting, but.
Sorry to interrupt, but we're going to run out of time.
Second. Alls in favor to extend to 11, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, please continue.
Thank you. Thanks. And that's the overview of electricity. Can we move to the next slide, please? So looking at natural gas, again, pie chart on the left showing the total greenhouse gas emissions from natural gas usage, just over 124,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent. You can see the graphic on the right, we have a breakdown, again, of natural gas by building type, vast majority coming from residential with a smaller portion of commercial. And the graphic at the bottom is demonstrating the breakdown of electricity versus natural gas usage within the buildings. Just an interesting graphic and breakdown to keep in mind in the conversation as we look towards emission reduction strategies, keeping in mind what the makeup of emissions are within the buildings in Samamish. So summary of baseline, looking at our 2019 baseline emissions, we have come up with a baseline of 345,615 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent. And the bar chart here demonstrates the makeup of which of those emissions are coming from transportation versus electricity and natural gas. And just want to reiterate the point that having this accurate baseline of emissions will help to capture any emissions reduction strategies from future efficiencies, improvements, or approaches that the city of Samamish chooses to undertake. And understanding the emissions composition will help the city to inform the direction of efforts and maximize impact from any investment around sustainability and carbon reductions. I'll pass it back to Alexis.
Thank you, Erin. And this is our last content slide here. So this is a timeline showing roughly what we expect from the process this year, when we expect different stages to take place. So overall, we're here in January finalizing our greenhouse gas vehicle miles traveled baseline with data from Puget Sound Energy. As we get into the late winter and early spring, we're going to be identifying measures to reduce greenhouse gases from vehicle miles traveled. We're going to be expanding our data analysis to include some baselining for the Climate Action Plan. Moving into the spring more thoroughly, we're going to start socializing measures from the greenhouse gas emissions and VMT reduction strategy, start working on Climate Action Planning stakeholder engagement and reduction strategies, and integrating the work from the greenhouse gas VMT document into the Comprehensive Plan Update. From there, we'll move into adopting greenhouse gas and VMT reduction strategy and socializing the Climate Action Plan greenhouse gas reduction strategies further, starting to involve some community workshops. And then getting into the fall, we'll be finalizing the strategies in the Climate Action Plan, developing the final report, and start socializing that document for adoption before, finally, in December, having a resolution adopting the final city of Samamish GeoPlus Climate Action Plan. Coming back to our questions at the beginning, we're very curious if you want to know more about project scopes or timelines, if there's anything about the baselining data that you'd like more information on, making sure that timeline is clear. And we also want to know if there are any key challenges and opportunities you think we should be aware of at this stage. Thank you all so very much. Happy to take your questions.
All right, Councilmember Howe.
Okay, just a couple of quick questions to start with. On Slide 39, you guys were talking about commercial and residential. Are schools considered commercial? Are schools considered commercial?
Yes.
Okay, and so that, okay, just trying to understand because there's certain things that we may control, there's certain things we may not control, like school districts. So I'm just, that's a question I would have, is like, how do we how do we manage that aspect? Another thing that I noticed is that much earlier in your slides, you had a slide showing Issaquah's climate action work, and it was very early. And what I was noticing was just some of the targets, like 25% reduction. Look, you got it right there. Like a decreased building energy use by 2030, which is incredibly vague. And so, I mean, it's it's a target, it's a goal. And so how fleshed out does this get from there in terms of prescriptive? How does how how does that actually come about so that we're able to accomplish something like that? And how frequently is something like this measured so that we know where we're at in that process? I I found that the line, the trend line that you did is if we don't do anything, this is what will happen. If we do something, it'll do this. That looks like an Excel thing that I could just do myself without any math or data. Because yeah, if we do something, but it's where I'm looking for is the bumps. Like if you don't hit this mark, it doesn't work. I don't know if I can make that more clear, but do you understand kind of where I'm going with this? Is that there's certain things that you must do in a prescribed manner, or you simply don't hit your target, no matter what? So those are the types of things I'd be looking for, understanding being built into this plan so I know where the breakpoints are, where are the really bad things that could happen along that line?
Yeah, absolutely. I think that all makes sense. In terms of the question around this slide, there's a lot of flexibility in developing actions and measures. You know, sometimes they are very specific and very quantifiable. Other times, they're a little bit less, right? So there's a lot of, there's a lot of room there. We're going to be working with city staff throughout the whole process to make sure that these measures really accurately reflect what is important, that they're exactly as quantitative and as measurable as the city wants them to be. And these are strategies and key actions that we're going to be getting into the details of with the city of Sumamish, David's city staff, as we move forward.
And and that makes sense to me because I think your big, I mean, the big hiccup that I just foresee, which I'm sure you do as well, the vehicles, single occupancy, that's going to be very reliant on resident education, which I forecast being problematic. So I, that's the type of thing that I think you can look ahead and just know that that's going to be an issue and understanding how are you going to overcome that? Because transit isn't the answer necessarily. So that's the type of thing where I'm just trying to understand goal versus the reality of where we are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you. I can't tell you how excited I am to see all the work and and the kickoff here. A couple of questions. First of all, about the goals. So you have the 2019 baseline, which is great. But I believe that our requirements at a state level are that we have to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions by 95% from the 1990 levels. So what's our plan to kind of extrapolate backwards to say if this is where we are today, what what was that level back in 1990? And then we should not have a target of 80% reduction, but 95% reduction because I believe that is the state requirement, yes?
Got it, Stuart. Erin, do you want to talk about?
Yeah, so I think that relates to both the state level as well as K 4 C, which has a different baseline year of 2007. And it's something we took into consideration, but we did not choose it for our baseline as same with 1990 because of data availability and and relevance to understanding the current makeup of the of the city of Sumamish. You know, we we wanted to set a baseline that was representative of of current actions. And in terms of the requirements of meeting both the K 4 C and state requirements, the the verbiage is to, you know, pursue actions that are in alignment with those reductions and support those reductions, but the city will not have to demonstrate within the city bounds reductions from from that baseline, but rather looking to assist the state and then the county with meeting the goals that that they have outlined. So it's something that we'll be getting into the weeds a little bit more when we do the city of Sumamish's target setting and really evaluating what that means to extrapolate those those baseline years and reductions to our 2019 baseline and and how we can be in alignment. So more to come there and how that fits into our goal setting.
Okay, I just, I'd rather us kind of aim higher, or in this case, lower, than not. So doing a 95% reduction from the 2019 baseline is a much different calculation than a 95% reduction from a 2007 or a 1990 baseline. So we know just in general that greenhouse gas emissions have been going up year over year everywhere. So I I think we definitely need to take that into consideration. When looking at our at our baseline numbers, did you look at the King County greenhouse gas inventory database?
Yes, so the King County, they provided a wedge analysis tool and very great data visualization with some scenarios in there. So it was something we referenced, cross-referenced our data with. We used some data for our electricity and natural gas usage. And we also spoke to both King County and Puget Sound Region to individuals involved in the the creation of those resources. So it's something that we are working with very closely throughout this process.
Okay, because in addition to the wedge tool, they actually have a database, right? With the where you can look up individual jurisdictions and greenhouse gas emissions by source. So just want to make sure you had that. The other thing is we're talking about greenhouse gas emissions, which is great, and it's really important. But the K 4 C goals have goals in outside of or in addition to greenhouse gas emissions, but they talk about waste reduction and other things. Will the scope of this cover that, or is it just focused on greenhouse gas emissions?
Yes, so when we move to the larger Climate Action Plan, we will include all of the elements that are addressed in the K 4 C commitment letter. The reason you see the focus on greenhouse gas emissions now stems from, as Alexis started with at the beginning, the grant for VMT emissions measurement and baseline establishment. So the establishment of this baseline was the first step and which is focused on carbon emissions, of course. But it will extend to be more comprehensive across different elements of of climate impact and not just carbon.
Excellent. And then if I understand, when you talked about the Scope 1 and 2 versus Scope 3, you're talking about only greenhouse gas emissions that we produce, not anything that we consume, correct? So like, if I buy a sofa, we're not calculating greenhouse gas emissions in, you know, kind of making and delivering that sofa, only only where that delivery truck crosses into Sumamish. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah, that that's a good way to think about it. Because, you know, it's great out here that that sofa would be considered in your Scope 3 emissions, you know, the upstream processing of that. But we're just looking at, in this instance, it would be the transportation associated with that and anything that happens within the geographic boundary of the city.
So just to clarify too, because if I can kind of see a little bit, one of the big, when I looked at the greenhouse gas emissions database from King County that came out, I think it came out in June or July of this year. One of the big ones for Sumamish was our our travel, our air travel. So we're not going to touch on things like that, is that correct? Because the airport's not in Sumamish?
I did see that that is how the King County looked at it, and and they kind of divvied up the emissions from the major Seattle airport to the different jurisdictions within the county. But based on the usage of their geographic plus boundary, that's, we are not including that in our baseline. And that, again, ties to targeting reduction strategies that are more so within the control. And, you know, air travel is not something that we would consider material to Sumamish or something that Sumamish would have impact into reducing.
Okay, thank you very much and very excited.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Lamb?
Thank you for the presentation. I am very excited to see the work started on the Climate Action Plan. My comments are a little bit along the lines of Councilmember Stewart's. So in Scope, will we ever get to Scope 3?
For this, for the Climate Action Plan, it's not something that will be considered in the baseline. I would say that as we go through this process of stakeholder engagement, if there are certain emission sources or environmental impacts that go into the Scope 3 realm a bit, such as waste or, you know, if if there if there were stakeholders that felt strongly about transportation to airports or the like, it's something that we could consider. Because, as I mentioned, the Climate Action Plan will touch on elements outside of our greenhouse gas baseline and and reduction. But in terms of of that baseline, the Scope 3 will will not be included in in this engagement.
So I'm just trying to be clear. So Scope 3 will never be in our Climate Action Plan?
That's correct, in terms of the engagement we're currently involved in.
So I guess I'm just like confused as to why Scope 3 isn't in it, especially when it pertains to consumption. Because if we are only focusing on greenhouse gas emissions that the city has can directly influence, then we aren't, everybody in the city will will consider that, oh, you know, I don't really need to do anything, you know, the city is doing everything, you know? And if you take a look at consumption-based data, Sumamish is the worst in the state of Washington and including Idaho and Oregon. I mean, we rival like Medina and Clyde Hill in your point in terms of consumption. So I do think it's a huge miss not to have consumption in this particular Climate Action Plan. And I also think it's a miss to not include, I think, what we're, our natural systems, such as what Issaquah has, which is natural systems and water and a section for community resilience and wellness, especially when we're affected by climate emergencies and heat waves, and not to have a section in there as well. I was just looking in the agenda bill that the CEP will not address some of these issues until after the the comprehensive plan is completed, which is after 2024. And I do think that if we are looking at reducing our G X G emissions by 50% in 2030, I think every little bit counts. And to Councilmember Howe's point, you know, transportation is a big component, but to get everybody out of their cars, you know, transit is going to have to be a component of it. And we can't have that kind of impact on transit in eight years. And so if we don't address consumption and really show the residents that they are accountable in reducing their G X G emissions too, then we aren't going to get there. That's kind of all I had, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you so much for that comment. We definitely agree Scope 3 is important. There are protocols for addressing Scope 3. It's not currently consistent with K 4 C guidance, but that may change over time. There are instances where, you know, a city may do one iteration of a Climate Action Plan and add on new categories in future iterations.
So, you know, Issaquah, they have those categories that I mentioned. And I know that in early planning stages, I wasn't part of the planning. I know, you know, council gave input. And we often talked about borrowing other cities' climate action plans as well. You know, what can we adopt now just to speed things along? And so is that being considered? Particularly when it, when we're talking about the water and then the community resilience and wellness portion in addition to the consumption portion.
So when we're talking about things like water, community resilience, I'm not sure if you're referencing separate documents, planning entities, but those are things that can be included in climate action planning. What we are presenting here is the work we've done so far, setting that, you know, the the main goal of the Climate Action Plan. That does not mean that there will not be water or waste or social justice goals and measures included as part of that plan. Is, am I understanding your question correctly?
Yes and no. I just think that if we're going to launch something by the end of this year, and we do want to make it as complete as possible, and if we're trying to streamline the process of getting there, having those topics in the plan that we, you know, publish at the end of this year, like, why not do it? Especially if we have cities, our neighboring cities already have them. Like, I'm not clear as to why we wouldn't do that or go that route.
Yeah, what I'm hearing is that things like open space, water, resilience are really important, and you'd like to find ways to see that incorporated. We can definitely discuss that feedback with city staff as we go forward.
Thank you, absolutely, thank you.
Thanks.
Councilmember O'Farrell?
My gosh, my questions are now relatively speaking so elementary. So I've just two very quick points. I wondered if we had, if you guys had reached out to King County Metro to get any data on bus transportation within Sumamish and bus usage. I know we'd looked at cars and vehicle miles traveled, but I wonder if we'd incorporated King County Metro Bus in that. And then the last thing I had, it was, it's a term you've used in the presentation Town Center, and you probably are familiar that Town Center is a particular destination within our city. And I'm not sure if you, if that's where you mean when you say Town Center or if you use the word Town Center in a much more generic fashion. But I think it's worth defining what's meant by Town Center in the plan so there's no confusion as to what part of the city you're referring to when you use that term.
Yes, so that's a good clarifying question. And when we're referring to the Town Center, we are referring to what is zoned as the Town Center. This language was pulled from the Bluma E I S, and it is referring to that town center subzone area and not the larger Town Center that includes some of the commercial uses.
Councilmember Ndepuere?
I just had a quick sort of off comment. So first of all, thank you all for these wonderful comments. I did think we have one helipad in Sumamish. Is that not true? One helipad, like a helicopter pad? Because we were talking about air traffic. Don't we have that? So I was wondering if we have more and if we have some air traffic in here?
Yeah, we do have at least one rotor that flies over, that is true. All right, before we derail too much. I I don't see hands yet, but as I'm speaking, the ways to get questions and questions answered, since I'm not thinking currently because it's late, is it, I know we talked about this, Scott, a little bit, like sending questions in. I I'm hoping we'll get this extremely large presentation to digest.
Yeah, we we have, we'll have the presentation for you. And sending in comments or questions, definitely.
And I know next week, obviously, like, we'll just continue to talk about this. But if there's anything that we would like from the consultants or something, basically sending to you to get clarification on.
Yeah, that's, that'd be great. And I can definitely make sure to route it to the the team and follow up on those. the team and follow up on those. You know, this is a, a long process, and we're, we're trying to move it along just as quickly as we can. You know, it's, it's a new budget year right now, we just started, so we're, we're doing our best here to try and wrap this up and move it through quickly. And in addition to all of the other housing and comprehensive plan work that we're doing with a pretty small staff department, so we're, we're really trying.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I think it always helps me to, even seeing like the Planning Commission questions and answers, that's so helpful for me to like revisit, like, what Deputy Mayor Lamb was just talking about. I'm like, what was that? So, that's super helpful, yeah. So I don't see any other hands. Thank you all for staying on and helping us through that, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, thank you all.
I'm sure we'll see them soon, I assume, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, David. So lastly, we do have council reports, and we have one written from Councilmember Stewart. I don't know if you want to touch on that, or if anyone else has anything? Okay.
I just, we do have our EFOR meeting. I don't think there's anything material that we're voting on, but I sent that out. It was actually a couple of weeks ago, and I apologize, I should have included that in my written report as well. So if y'all want to look that up, and if you have any questions, let us know.
Cool, yeah, and it's thankfully, it's very like, it's past minutes and consent and something else.
Yeah, I think that's the only, those are the only two things we're voting on, is consent and the, the previous minutes. And then the other information, I don't know if staff had a chance to look, but a couple of the presentations that I went to are very relevant for what we're talking about in terms of housing and, and climate, and some of the social justice aspects of that. So, and while we may, you know, have challenges in making sure we have inclusionary zoning, there's some really great data out there about how our zoning, while it may not have had the intention of being discriminatory, has turned out to be terribly discriminatory. So definitely something to, to go look at from the, the GNPB presentations, thanks.
Deputy Mayor Lamb?
I have a Public Issues Committee meeting on Wednesday. It's a pretty light agenda, I did send it out to council earlier. It's mainly housekeeping topics. There is a discussion topic on the King County Regional Homelessness Authority five-year plan.
Great, anyone else? Scott, do you have anything?
Only since we have a couple of minutes. I just wanted to provide a quick update and say a big thank you to our crews that have been doing a lot of cleanup over the past couple of days, and just to point out that we did have some road closures, some were a little bit longer than others. We had trees down, we had wires down, we had a wire down on one of our crew trucks right after the crew member got out of the truck to check something. So it was a pretty crazy time, but I want to say a big thank you to all of the parks and public works crews for being out there and doing constant cleanup. Just for a little context, I think we had 25 trees down and parks in one version or another, either across trails or on structures. So I just wanted to, to have folks remember that our first priority after those or during those storms is public safety, and so that's why we closed things down out of an abundance of caution until we can get in and make sure it's safe. So I just wanted to, to point that out and to say thank you, because they did a great job of getting things cleared up and out of the way and things up and running pretty quickly. So with that, I am concluded.
Yeah, and thank you to those who use the C Click Fix or whatever, too. I think you were the one that told me, have them send it, so I appreciate that.
It's very helpful for the crews to be able to prioritize and target where they need to be based on those that come in. So continue to encourage everyone to use the MISO Mamish, whether it's on the app or online, to notify when you see something that is a, a tree down, or a pothole, or something like that, any, any kind of thing like that, and then we can map it and track it, and it gets into the system. So appreciate that.
All right, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move we adjourn. Second.
All right, moved and seconded, any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, thank you, everybody, have a good evening.